I'd like to welcome everyone to our electronic committee of the whole public input session meeting on November the 18th, 2020. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, regional councils participating from home, staff and myself are here in the council chambers. I now ask Tim Brubaker to please do the roll call.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our electronic committee of the whole public input session meeting.
Thank you Chair Redman. Councillor Armstrong?
Here.
Councillor Clark?
Here.
Councillor Erb?
Here.
Councillor Foxton? Councillor Foxton, I can see you.
President, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yep. Councillor Galloway?
Here.
Councillor Harris?
Here.
Councillor Jaworski?
Here.
Councillor Jawett?
Here.
Councillor Kiefer?
Here.
Councillor Lorenz?
Here.
Councillor McGarry? Councillor Nowak?
Here.
Councillor Shontz?
Here.
Councillor Strickland?
Here.
Councillor Vrankovic?
Here.
Chair Redman?
Here.
That's all present except Councillor McGarry who sent delayed regrets.
Yes, and Councillor McGarry has an important council meeting this evening, thank you. The purpose of this meeting is to hear delegations regarding the regional service review. No decisions are being made this evening. The meeting is being held to hear from delegations regarding the region's service review. Notice of this meeting was posted on the region's website and via social media. If you're watching this meeting via our live webcast and you would like to speak to the meeting, please contact regionalclerk@regionofwaterloo.ca or you can provide written comments after the meeting to regionalclerk@regionofwaterloo.ca. This meeting is scheduled to finish by 11:00 p.m. Council will determine what needs to happen if any registered delegates have not been heard when we reach 11:00 p.m. Council will be able to pass a motion to go past this time. We're optimistic we can hear from everyone in this timeframe. Everyone brings an important point of view to this meeting. Bearing in mind that we have about five hours of delegations ahead of us, if a specific point has already been raised by a delegation before you, I would ask that you would please try to provide new information or points of view. I would now like to remind all delegations of some guidelines for participation in tonight's meeting. Please leave your video and camera turned off and your microphone and audio muted until you are called upon to speak. If you conduct yourself in any of the following manners, it will result in immediate removal from the meeting. Interrupting councillors, staff, or other delegations. Derogatory statements about councillors, staff, or others. Turning your camera on at inappropriate times. And any hate speech or defamatory comments. Based on council direction, the region's strategic plan that staff has presented to council through the budget and the report at committee yesterday, Plan and Budget Plan Beyond COVID-19, shows our commitment to all community members, placing high importance on the most vulnerable and those impacted in the workforce. Community engagement is at an all-time high. We saw thousands march in the streets in June in support of Black Lives Matter. The plan addresses inequities in our community through additional investments to support BIPOC residents, as well as a stronger focus on addressing the calls to action in the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada. I hope the community remains as engaged and committed through the budget process, and I commend each of you for being here to speak before council this evening regarding the region's role as service system manager overseeing the over 14,000 children in childcare and also operator of five children's centers that offer 207 spaces in our community. COVID-19 has created significant challenges on the childcare system, including enrollment and increased costs for childcare providers. The challenges are impacting the sustainability of some childcare programs and additional funding is required to maintain childcare spaces. The 2,000 licensed childcare spaces currently vacant. The system is very fragile. Council will make its final decision on the service review recommendations after further consultation at a special council meeting on December the 2nd. I will now ask Barb Cardo, Director of Children's Services, to give you more details on the 2021 Plan Beyond COVID-19, specifically the childcare recommendations coming out of the service review. Welcome Barb.
Thank you Chair Redman. I'm here to speak with you about the service review and the 2019 implementation. I'm wondering if there is a PowerPoint available? I could do that, yeah. It will take me a moment. Okay, okay.
So we're just waiting for the slide deck to be loaded and then we will do a screen share and everyone will see the same information and Barb will speak to it.
There we go. That was awkward. I apologize for the mix-up about that. Yes, so here is the PowerPoint presentation so that you can see what I am referring to as we go through it together. So I'm here to talk about the service review, specific to the childcare operations, the childcare centers. And my name is Barb Cardo and I'm the Director of Children's Services and I'm also a member of the Service Review Steering Committee. Before I spoke about the actual service review, I wanted to provide some contextual information. And that's really around the role of the region in licensed childcare. Essentially, we have two major functions. Well, we have one major function, which is that of the service system manager. And that role is mandated by the province. Within that role, we're responsible to coordinate and plan the operations of the local childcare and early years system. And that system includes 14,000 licensed childcare spaces for children zero to 12. Those spaces are operated by 67 different operators in 147 center-based locations and in addition, licensed home childcare locations. In addition to the planning and the operation and the oversight, we also provide funding to childcare operators across the community and supports that help centers to meet the special needs of all children in their programs. As well, we provide supports to help improve quality across the childcare system. The other part of our role, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight in part, is our discretionary role as childcare operator. The Childcare and Early Years Act allows the municipality to directly operate childcare, but is not required. And so in Waterloo region, or at the region of Waterloo, we do operate five licensed childcare centers, excuse me, for 207 children. So the work of KPMG involved the following phases. The Children's Centers Review Steering Committee guided the KPMG's work. And the steering committee consisted of councillors, senior leaders in the region, as well as a community childcare expert. The following phases informed the final product of KPMG, and that included an environmental scan where KPMG consulted with comparator municipalities who either directly operate childcare or used to directly operate it. It also involved significant stakeholder consultation, including regional staff, union reps, parents of children who are currently receiving care at one of the centers or were previously enrolled, community childcare operators, community agencies, parents of children not currently enrolled at one of the centers, and I already spoke about the municipalities. They did a current state analysis as well of the system, but also of our direct operations. And out of all that work of stakeholder input, doing the environmental scan, doing a deeper dive analysis of the system and of the region as a childcare operator, KPMG prepared, as requested, some options for the steering committee to consider. And they invited the steering committee to hold those options against what our priorities were as a region, what our budgetary role pressures are, what the vision of our role is for children's services across Waterloo region. So this slide outlines the findings, and I think that many of you have heard this already over the past week, but this slide really speaks to the major finding, and that was that the region invests proportionately, more heavily, in the 207 spaces that are directly operated by the region of Waterloo than in the 13,800 other licensed childcare spaces across the region. And in percentage terms, that means that 10.2% of the children's services budget is provided to the 1.9% of the childcare spaces provided by the region of Waterloo Children's Centers. KPMG indicated in their report that if we were to reallocate that funding based on how we currently fund childcare operators and provide fee subsidies, we could support between 350 and 791 licensed spaces that are operated by community programs. So the steering committee made the recommendation for a closure of the five regionally-operated childcare centers with the recommendation to reallocate the $4.3 million provincial money so that it could be more equitably distributed across the broader childcare system to address our pressing priorities. And the annual savings of approximately $678,000 from the tax levy and an additional 294 from tax-supported reserve contributions could be determined, or reallocation could be determined by council. On this slide, I wanted to make sure that council understood that the decision of the steering committee was not made lightly. It was, the people around the table were fully aware of the quality that we provide in our five regionally-operated centers. And many of us who have been in the field of early learning and childcare for many years have known that in our community and are very proud of the work that we do. However, we had to really stop and think about the cost that that care was costing the system, and we had to really think about what our role was as a system manager of 14,000 spaces. And that the needs of those other 13,800 were quite exceptional and that there were issues around affordability, accessibility, sustainability, and equity that really needed to be addressed. And so the committee decided that it was very important that we reconsider how we were structured and that we close the five regionally-operated centers so that we could reinvest in the system so that all 13,800 spaces could be supported in a more intentional So this slide outlines the priorities for funding reallocation that the steering committee discussed and were recommending. That with the $4.3 million, excuse me, we could address affordability across this system. For example, through fee reduction pilots, we could support infant care so that more parents could afford infant care, as that is one kind of care that is out of the reach of many families. We could also support additional fee subsidies for children who really could use them but aren't currently accessing them. Sustainability of the existing programs, as Chair Redman mentioned in her opening remarks, childcare programs have a significant issue right now around low enrollment, and they are reporting that they are offering spaces or only have 70% of their spaces full at this time, and it's due to lack of demand for those spaces resulting from COVID. Well, when you think that our nonprofit operators rely heavily on parent fees to pay their costs, this means that they are falling short of being able to pay all their costs in the current state. They need funding and they need support to continue to be sustainable while we work through COVID and come out the other side to a system that can offer childcare as we recover. Funding could also be used to increase quality by investing in improved supports and accountability through new policy, new quality measurement tool, and a new quality support model so that all childcare centers across the region could access these services and improve quality. It's also important to us that we increase equity of access for Waterloo region's most vulnerable children. We know that many children are still coming to school in JK who have not received any additional supports, who could have desperately used them when they were in their early years, when their young brains would have benefited so greatly by quality early childcare. So this slide outlines the potential implementation timelines. So if the recommendation is approved, staff will create a detailed implementation plan, including supports for our affected families and staff, and a comprehensive funding reallocation plan. Edith McIntosh, Christopher Cambridge, and Kinsman Children's Centers would close late in mid-2021, although we're pushing more towards September to align with the transition to junior kindergarten so that fewer children would be impacted. Almira Children's Center will have a later transition timeline because that plan will need to be created jointly with the Waterloo Region District School Board and the Ministry of Education to find a new childcare provider for that site. Staff is committed to ensuring that children currently served by the children's centers are offered alternative placements that meet their needs. As I mentioned earlier, while 152 of the 207 regionally-operated childcare spaces are occupied, 79 of those children will be in JK as age as of next fall, and 72 therefore will be supported to transition to community-operated spaces. There's approximately 2,000 licensed spaces for children zero to four that are currently vacant across Waterloo region. Affected staff, which is up to 62 full-time equivalent, will be supported through our Human Resources Labor Relations and our Employee and Family Assistance Program. And regarding funding reallocation, a comprehensive plan will be developed. The plan will address the key priorities that I named earlier, and the plan will be built on extensive engagement with key stakeholders such as families in childcare and not in childcare, including families who are Black, Indigenous, or people of color, childcare operators, early learning partners, such as special needs resourcing agencies, and family and children's services. And the plan will align with our local service system plan. So that brings me to the end of the presentation, and I just want to say that the decision of the steering committee, as I spoke about earlier in the presentation, was not made lightly. The steering committee acknowledged that this decision, although it's a really important decision to make for all children across Waterloo region, would clearly have impacts on families and on staff. And that is when a decision becomes really difficult to make. And so our commitment to treating each family and staff with dignity and respect as we work through this together will be our highest priority. Thank you.
Thank you very much Barb for a very informative and fulsome presentation. Delegations that registered prior to the meeting will be allocated five minutes to speak. There's a timer which will appear to council and participants in the council chamber window. I will provide a one-minute warning reminder when your five minutes is nearing completion. Delegations who registered after the cutoff time have three minutes. Again, thank you all for taking time to share your opinions with council this evening. And I will now call on the first delegation as you registered and is listed in the agenda. Anna DeBoer, you are the first delegation. You have five minutes, welcome. Anna, you're on mute there.
Sorry, unmute. Sorry Karen. Ms. Redman, I apologize.
Karen's fine, go ahead.
Yes, I know you as Karen. All right. So thank you, members of the council, for this opportunity. I would like to speak to you this evening regarding the closing of the five regional-run daycare centers. I feel this is a huge unnecessary loss, especially that during a pandemic. My son Mason has been attending Edith McIntosh since September 2018. I understand the council has assured us that we will be provided a daycare spot no matter what the outcome is. However, I chose this daycare for very important reasons, which has caused me to feel very strongly about this issue. Although my experience is primarily with Edith McIntosh, I'm here to support all five daycare centers. The region of Waterloo Childcare Centers are leaders in the province. Many other regions look to the region of Waterloo as an example of how to offer high-level daycare within their region. For example, Edith McIntosh has received a AAA grading, which is only given to a handful of childcare centers in Ontario. As well, Edith McIntosh is listed as the top five daycares in the region of Waterloo. We should celebrate it, not close it. One of the strongest points of the region of Waterloo Childcare Centers is that they follow the High School curriculum. This program ignites children's interest in learning to be creative environment that encourages them to explore. They focus on early learning as they make decisions, build academic skills, develop socially and emotionally, and become part of the classroom community. The things that my son has learned at daycare continues to astonish me. They've recently taught him self-regulation and awareness in regards to helping him to identify and control his emotions and deal with conflict, encouraging him to label those emotions, and then to use breathing techniques. And then this information has been passed on to us and we are now using this at home. They not only support our child, but us as a family. The success can be immediately seen as a child enters JK. When talking to a JK teacher, she said that within the first hour, they can tell which students attended a good quality childcare center. Equality is linked to positive learnings and outcomes. It's a strong component of public investment. It shows that public funding centers report back a 47% return in the region's GDP. For example, in Quebec, 2008 earned 47% more than it cost that year, but newly-employed mothers contributed $5.1 billion to the province's GDP. As well, to speak in regards to the provinces, as it's been labeled one of the communities for Ontario Places to Grow, which supports the concept of smart growth. So one of the overall goals for the region of Waterloo, according to smart growth, is to plan to create vibrant urban areas. So in the one main I like to focus on is human services need of regional residents such as police, social services, pre-employment, childcare, and healthcare, vary for age, ability, scale, background, and interest. It's a fundamental to the livability of a community. The downtown core area is a daycare desert. There are no other daycare options for not-for-profit or profit daycares, except for those in private care. The Canadian Centre for Policy Alternatives estimates that 44% of non-school-aged children live in daycare deserts, areas where only one available spot for one.
Anna, you have one minute left.
All right. So a lot within the daycare, more urban areas and suburbs have daycares built into them within the schools. Many schools in the downtown are too old to allow for extensive renovations to happen. The city is, the region is incurring people to live, to come to downtown for the intensification and density improvements, but it's not providing any daycare for those families. Often allotted home daycares are uneducated, unregulated home care providers that are caring for the children. Many more, but I apologize, I don't have the time, so I hope other delegates can cover those.
Thank you very much Anna. I see no questions. The second presenter is Eric Jarden from Kitchener. Eric, you have five minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Councillor Redman. My name is Eric Jarden. I'm a father of three children, aged three, five, and seven, all of whom entered independent and rewatched private home daycare prior to entering Edith McIntosh Children's Center in Kitchener. Sadly, this isn't my first rodeo. I've had the nerve-wracking task of addressing regional council five years ago on this very subject. I'd like to voice my disappointment that you only released the information about the proposed closures last Wednesday, leaving parents who work full-time and have their hands full with children almost no time at all to develop informed opinions and understand the region's intention. It feels slimy, like you're trying to shove the recommendation through and use COVID-19 as the scapegoat. I hope you vote in a positive manner this time, just as you did five years ago, after listening to the impact and value that you have on our community, beyond just line items on the regional budget and an accountant's report. We desire a strong region to live in that sets a high bar for childcare. Yes, operating the centers is discretionary, but you do it so well, let's build on that. I hope, I imagine, we don't need to tell you that this group is engaged. We'll be just as active when it's our turn to vote in future. We have been and will continue to hear about equity and equality around these centers. There is a common misconception that these centers are for the wealthy only. Anyone can enroll in these centers and there's no income check, subsidies remain fully available. Edith Mack is not located in a wealthy area of Kitchener, it's also located in a childcare desert. The other statement that is implied is that these centers are too good because they set the bar high and well-trained RECEs working in them. This industry often pays this predominantly female workforce poorly. Are you comfortable with firing all of these positions and leaving them to take a pay cut and fill the holes in other centers? Should not all children have the opportunity to be cared for by someone who has formal training on their health, education, and development in their formative young years? Someone who is looking for the next job because low pay isn't sustainable for their families? The staff in our centers have a very low turnover and should be held as a model, not as overreaching. Our experiences with home care have not all been poor, but neither have they been great. Enough have been lacking that I cherish our experience at our center. Yes, there are other great centers in the region like the Butterfly Learning Center, Bright Starts, and Emmanuel, but they are not the norm. When the pandemic hit, our centers were the first to open to emergency and essential workers. That is what well-trained and professional centers are capable of. The Q&amp;A document sent to parents shows capacity versus enrollment charts. Due to the lack of time to prepare, I'll focus on Edith Mack. The document states that there are 34 spaces, but the enrollment is at 26%, or 26, a vacancy of 24%. What it doesn't say is that due to COVID, the center is at its maximum capacity due to staff, the number of teachers. the number of teachers on staff, and how they're allocated. There isn't the budget to hire more staff, so this vacancy is not a vacancy at all and is actually the maximum capacity under COVID protocols. As of January 1st, 2020, there were 644 families on the waitlist across five centers. This decreased to 132 by July 1st. While the waitlists have decreased, they still exist. Again, this points to a system that is at its COVID capacity. So when we speak about vacancy rates in the daycare system, is it actual vacancy or just the maximum allowed under the COVID restrictions and operational restrictions like staffing? Now I'd like to speak about a solution. Five years ago, I stood before you and asked you to raise the fees an appropriate amount to allow the centers to remain solvent. I also asked for a portion of my fees to go to helping those with subsidies. Five years later.
Eric, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Five years later, you have not acted to increase the solvency of the centers, and I learned that subsidies remain available to all who qualify for them. This idea would fall under option two, initiate cost-saving measures of the KPMG report. What sort of an increase would be needed for the region to stop looking to do away with these wonderful community resources? 20%? I'll pay. The KPMG report states the additional revenues from raising fees from 0.6 to 9.2%, and it would generate $164,000 in additional income. Why not explore higher amounts if it means keeping the centers open? Not one parent I've spoken to is looking for a handout. We all want this to be sustainable. So why does council avoid solutions proposed by the very parents that open their wallets each month to send their kids to the centers? Why does the council that voted to keep them open suddenly jump to the worst and most drastic measures? Let's keep these centers a model of learning. Use them as resources so that everyone can benefit from them, not just those attending. Bring the staff from other, the other 62 childcare operators to share how our centers have operated in a way that makes the children who attend and the parents who send them love them as we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next presenter is Danica Chamberlain from Almyra. Danica, you have five minutes, and you have the floor. Welcome.
Hello, welcome. Good evening, council members, parents, and other attendees. I am Danica Chamberlain. My four-year-old daughter London attended Almyra Children's Center from September 2017 through September 2020. She was one of the first infants in the center when they began their infant program in the new facility. Her time at the center was formative for her in many ways and prepared her so well for beginning junior kindergarten. We are so grateful to the staff of the center who contributed to her time there. Their examples influence how my husband and I parent to this day. Really, all our experiences at the center have been great. Our family chose center-based care at Almyra Children's Center because we valued consistent, reliable care with highly-educated staff. We were unable to find that anywhere else when looking into other options available to us in Almyra. When speaking with other parents of the center, we agree that we feel peace of mind when we have our kids in the care of the center. And I know for some of us parents here in Almyra, we chose to live in Almyra specifically by having the center here. And now, my 15-month-old son Ward attends the center. And according to one of the FAQs I read, Ward is just one of three infants currently attending a directly-operated program. I was just weeks pregnant when I put him on the waitlist at the Almyra Center, in both a state of panic and excitement. Excitement that another one of our children would have the opportunity to have the fantastic care at the center, and panic because there are so few infant care spots across the whole system. And I really didn't know what other options we would have if there wasn't a spot available for him at the center when I needed to return to work. I want to focus specifically on infant care because the care that the Almyra Children's Center provides for infants is incomparable to anything available in, specifically in the Almyra community. The facility is purpose-built for these infants, and they're able to provide welcoming, attentive, and organized care by the staff. They're able to provide food options that are varied and nutritious. And having a specific, safe sleep environment provides great comfort to me as a parent. And that's not something that's available in other care settings. The choice to make this recommendation now as our region experienced a significant second wave of the pandemic with such little time before a decision will be made by council rocks any trust that I have this decision. This recommendation is about anything more than dollars and cents. And as any parent would know, any consideration involving children must be more, about more than money. Their well-being must be the priority, while recognizing that there are improvements needed to build equality across the whole system. As more information has been shared over the last week, it appears that the impact on us parents here at the Almyra Center differs from the other centers. Almyra is a growing community with hundreds of new homes planned or being currently built. With just one other center-based care provider community, there is clearly a need for high-quality childcare. And as a parent, it is mildly encouraging to hear that the Almyra Center would transition to a new operator if the region does decide to close. The FAQs put out this week briefly address how the region intends to ensure the quality space, that quality spaces will be available for the kids impacted. I fully expect that us parents will be holding the region accountable and ensuring that the quality of these spaces will be comparable to the quality that we currently have in the centers, and that the closures will actually contribute to increasing quality system-wide as the region tells us it should. I ask that if the decision to close the centers is made and the search begins for a new operator in Almyra, please ensure that infant spaces remain a priority, along with the toddler and preschool.
Danica, you have one minute left.
The Almyra community needs this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Danica. Maren Gebre-Hewitt from Kitchener, you are the next speaker. You have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, attendees, and parents. My name is Maren Gebre-Hewitt. I live in Kitchener. My son Lior attends Edith Mackintosh. I would like to speak to you about a few concerns I have with the report. As a parent, I can almost be sure that everyone here is aware or have been impacted in one way or another by the lack of childcare availability in our region. From a personal experience, my own son was on one list for over a year before he got his spot at Christopher. Although we live in Kitchener, knowing the kind of quality care he will be getting there, I did not mind the drive. He attended Christopher for about eight months until he got a spot at Edith Mackintosh currently. My question is, how would closing this center would allow for a creation of any new spaces when most of the operating budget for next year will be used up in severance pay? Also, what is the timeline? How soon can I get care for my child and my community during this pandemic time? My third question, how can we justify eliminating over 70 jobs that held by women with living wages in a profession that is already seen as being not real? I understand the importance of equal access to childcare for all, and I'm all for that. But this decision is based solely on financial consideration, and that is wrong. As a mother and as a woman, this change will impact my right to access a quality childcare of my choice, and it takes away my son's world as he knows it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maren. The next speaker is Tizzi Muambo from Kitchener.
Thank you. My name is Tizzi Muambo. We use the Cambridge Children's Center. And I also wanted to come and just voice my disagreement with this recommendation. As one of the things that has been given as an example is that it promotes equity primarily for those who are marginalized. In my view, I feel like this has taken away few quality spots and then maybe leaving us with mediocre care or none at all. It's like, to me, it feels like it's being told that you have gold-standard daycare, but because others do not, we will take it away from everyone, so no one has it. I think rather than, my suggestion is rather than taking away these spots, the conversation should be around how to raise other spots to the same level so that others can be able to share in the same quality. To me, that looks like a step towards equity. And in that way, local government will be helping to level the playing fields between those who have and those who have less. Because if this level of quality is taken away, which is subsidized by the region, I won't be one of the people who's able to maintain this kind of level at another institution. And I want to just talk about my lived experience as for what this impact would do to me of taking away my center. For one thing, it takes away a valid choice that I made after looking at different centers and finally deciding on this one. And after two years on the waitlist, because I didn't know at the time that you have to go on the waitlist when you're still expecting. And there would be fewer quality spots, and that means I would probably have a longer time on the waitlist and probably end up not having a spot. And I wouldn't be willing to take my child to any other place that I would perceive as giving lesser care. And that would mean that without quality care, and then in my situation, I don't have family locally, I solely rely on daycare. So that would mean that I would have to leave the workforce. And moreover, my kids would lose the center. For me, I don't speak English at home. We speak another language. So it gives my kids, I feel, an opportunity to be able to socialize with others and to prepare for school in a way I couldn't do for them on my own at home. And just as a quick note, I'm also blown away by their concern and respect for diversity, particularly at my center. And if I'm not able to work, I would not be able to have any income, which means I might end up seeking social assistance. I might end up seeking housing assistance. So this would further strain the resources. And it's like a game of whack-a-mole where resources are taken from one system, and then they have to help us through another system. And it means that.
Tizzi, could you maybe turn your video off? You're breaking up.
Other people who need them, and also fail to participate in the local. Turn off my video.
Yeah, just it might make your audio.
Another point I wanted to brought is that, is this better?
Yes. Please continue.
Another point I wanted to just give is that as a minority, it's very difficult to get a job. And by that, I mean meaningful work in a career, a field of choosing. And even studies have shown that. And also, if I take time away, it also means. So for someone like me, taking away my options for childcare from just telling the story to underscore the importance of any care, particularly for mothers like me. And it's been said things like that throw people into poverty at things.
You have a minute left, Tizzi.
Education, drug use, health. I would also argue, thank you, I would argue to say that access to quality childcare is also another point you can add, that without, it also put a mother at the risk of entering into. The talk, this is connected a lot with promoting equity, particularly for marginalized people. But at the end, when it ends up widening the gap for someone like me, it ends up becoming tokenistic and more virtue signaling because a decision like this would mean that someone like me is further marginalized from the center, from those who have economic means. And I do not find that to be equitable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your intervention. You broke up a little bit. I don't know if you would want to submit something written, but you would be free to do that if you wanted to. I think we got the gist of your conversation though, so thank you very much for being part of this conversation. Shaylin Duke from Cambridge, you're the next delegation. You have five minutes. Welcome. Shaylin is not with us. Okay, we will go to Carolyn Ferns, Public Policy and Government Relations Coordinator, Ontario Coalition for Better Childcare. Welcome, Carolyn. You have five minutes. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, councillors. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Carolyn Ferns. I'm the Policy Coordinator at the Ontario Coalition for Better Childcare. Our organization is a member-based coalition whose members are primarily private nonprofit childcare centers across the province, along with provincial organizations that care about childcare issues. And I'm here on behalf of our members to urge you to vote to save Waterloo Region Children's Centers and vote no to closure. Since this report was released last week, I've had dozens of calls and emails from concerned local residents, parents, educators, and other supportive community members. And the most common question that I've received is, is this a done deal? Has it already been decided? And each time, I've told them, no, of course not. I know that you, as regional councillors, you take these public input sessions very seriously, and that when you hear strong arguments and personal stories from your constituents, it matters. And I know this because I was here just five years ago when the same kind of recommendation was sitting before council. And after 34 deputations against closure, and after hearing from your constituents, councillors voted 14 to 1 to keep the regional centers open. Now, we've heard from several parents already tonight, and we're going to hear from dozens more who will speak to the value of these public programs. So I'll make the rest of my comments brief. I'd really just like to address a few points that I heard in the introduction and presentation at the beginning of this meeting. First, I'd like to address the issue that the regional centers cost more to operate than those in the private sector. This suggests some kind of inefficiency on the part of the centers. But the truth is that the higher cost of the regional centers is because they provide a decent living wage for early childhood educators. So when I hear people say you could create more spaces for less money, what I hear is it's okay to pay early childhood educators less, and it's not. And others in the childcare community, including ECEs in the private sector, want those decent wages there as a benchmark and as something we should all strive for. And I think that the KPMG report represents a cynical calculus that emphasizes the costs associated with operating the regional centers and minimizes their value. I argue that the value of these centers provide to your region is enormous and must be preserved. Finally, I've also heard the argument from some proponents that this isn't a cost-cutting measure so much as a funding redistribution measure. But let's be clear, a decision to close would cut over 250 childcare spaces from your region, close down facilities that have been a beacon of hope to local families for decades, and it would toss more than 60 early childhood educators, primarily women, out of their jobs in the middle of a pandemic and an economic recession that is already disproportionately impacting female labor force participation. I heard a reference, an inference at the beginning that being a responsible service system manager and a direct operative childcare are somehow incompatible. But we know that around Ontario, many communities successfully combine these two complementary roles. Toronto operates 57 childcare centers. Raski Peterborough voted to continue to their public centers, and Durham Region recently expanded their childcare centers as well. So there really isn't this push to privatize at the moment. In fact, the tide has turned, and more regions are realizing the value of their directly-operated childcare programs. Chair Redmond, I heard in your opening remarks that the childcare system is very fragile right now, and that's very true. Over 132 childcare centers across Ontario have closed. But that system is made only more fragile when more childcare centers close down, and especially when they're the only childcare centers that serve those neighborhoods, the so-called.
Carolyn, you've got one minute left.
And especially when those centers serve children with disabilities whose needs are not being adequately met in the private sector. So in closing, I just want to urge councillors to listen with open minds and open hearts to all the parents who are here tonight. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Carolyn. Tanya Rosendez from Cambridge, you're next. Welcome, Tanya.
Thank you very much, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Tanya. I am the mother of a three-year-old and a 20-month-old here in Cambridge, and we attend Christopher Childcare Center. I'm just going to actually go into my personal experience of living with a child that has a hearing loss. He was born with that. He requires hearing aids, and as a result, has a speech delay. I had to extend my maternity leave from one year to 18 months because even with family priority, I still cannot get a spot for him. And I chose to, rather than explore any other center, to extend my leave and reduce my income as a result because even though our maternity leaves legally have gone from one year to 18 months, that we haven't got more money. In fact, it's still the same amount of money. So I decided to take that, that cut in my family income in order to wait, knowing that what I was waiting for was going to be worth it. And it was worth it. I apologize. My child started daycare saying three words bare. My child started daycare saying three words, barely. And thanks to his teachers and working with our speech therapist, Kids Ability. After a month, he now says twelve words. Sorry, that means the world to me. Cause I, when I first got the diagnosis of my child, I worried I would never hear him say, Mom, you are, I love you. And Christopher has given me hope again. And this here now is taking that hope away. The reality is that none of the childcare center can turn me away because my child has accommodations and has a disability. That is a fact that even this morning, speaking to my social worker at Kids Ability, he did confirm. Just because these other private centers can access these resources doesn't mean that they are going to do so. And it's not those one-offs or getting that information that's going to make a difference in these children's lives. It's those interactions. It's those small moments with the staff that make the biggest difference. I can testify to that with my child. He is, has learned so much and has come such a long way. And only two months of being at Christopher, it has been worth the wait. I am very worried of what your decision is going to mean for my child. I'm gonna have to settle essentially for my child or choose to leave my job, a career that I value and will have worked so hard for. I'm a social worker, a psychotherapist in the mental health and addictions field. There is a need for me, and I love my career and I want to give back to this community. But your decision put me in a spot where I'm gonna have to choose between my career and providing an income for my family and what is best for my child and finding a center that's going to meet his needs. I also just want to speak quickly. Um, everything that has been said, I I obviously have the same experience. I'm having a very hard time understanding um this idea that there is enough spots for all these children when every single parent, mother that I have spoken to has talked about how there is such a long wait to get particularly an infant spot. Um, I waited twenty-one months for my first child and then twenty-seven months for my second. Ultimately, can only get a toddler spot, not not an infant spot. The fact that we have a waitlist speaks to the fact that there is a need and not enough spaces to meet that need. And right now, we are saying that there is enough spots, but we are in a pandemic. We need to remember that, that people are choosing to keep their children home now, but the reality is that this pandemic isn't going to last forever.
Tanya, you have a minute left.
And at some point, parents are going to return back to work. Even if the virtual component does continue, which for some fields it will, we still need daycare. And these spots are not going to magically appear. There is talks about we need to save money for the for the budget, which I completely honor. It is very important that we do that for our economy. But at the same time, we are also hearing about reinvesting this money, and the two things just don't add up. I don't understand if we're trying to save money or if we're trying to better the service. And I haven't heard of a plan of how we're actually going to better the service, rather, right now it's just a promise, and right now it feels like it's an empty promise. Thank you very much, and I apologize for the tears. I'm very passionate about this. So thank you so much for hearing me out.
Tanya, thank you very much, and please never apologize about your passion for your children.
Thank you. And good luck on your decision.
Thank you. Uh, Megan McKnight from Almyra. Megan, you are the next delegation. You have the floor and you have five minutes. Welcome. You don't look like Doug. Doug, you look like Megan.
Doug's my husband. So, thank you. Uh, good evening, uh, members of regional council. Um, I'm speaking out today to express my disappointment in the recommendations being put to council to close the five regionally-run centers. My family has been fortunate to attend the Almyra Children's Center. Connor, our three-year-old son, has thrived there since he was one. Mason, our five-year-old, was less than fortunate and never made it off the waitlist. He is now enrolled in senior kindergarten at Riverside Public School. Living in Almyra, we have very few options for licensed childcare, particularly for infant care. Connor was on the waitlist for a few months before being notified of an opening. We jumped at the opportunity and wouldn't change it for the world. Connor has grown up with so many of the children in his room and has been with the same teachers since he joined the center. Consistency is incredibly important and has enabled Connor to develop strong relationships with his teachers and with the students that are in his classroom, which has helped to provide a sense of security. These people aren't just teachers. They're our friends, they're family. The love, support, joy, and compassion they have shown us is incredible. These teachers go out of their way to get to know our whole family, grandparents included. My parents and my in-laws are well-known at the center. Um, so firstly, thank you to the region of Waterloo for creating this amazing experience for us. Without this location, we would want to keep any of our children at another licensed childcare center. We have experience in an unlicensed home-based center. Um, and we can just, it's so much better for our experience, at least in the center. Um, however, again, in Almyra, we are left with minimal center locations. The only other licensed location does not offer infant care. The search for high-quality, reputable childcare location that's close to home, offering professional and affordable care is near impossible. This announcement to close the centers comes at a time when communities should not be cutting services, but instead should be providing more support to families and mothers to return to the workplace. Closing these centers would reduce or eliminate the family choice for women to enter the workplace, earn an income, have access to high-quality childcare, and to contribute to our economic communities. Childcare is one of the top three in a post-pandemic recovery, and lack to the lack of access to childcare is not just a result of COVID nineteen. It has been a burden in Canada since women started joining the workplace. Again, it was touched on earlier, waitlists to any of these centers just show that there is a demand for students to be here. I mean, six hundred forty-four families on the waitlist as of January first, twenty twenty. In our current society, we're striving to become more equitable workforce, and childcare is necessary for this to happen. Prior to the widespread business closures uh due to pandemic, women's participation in the workplace for the age group of twenty-five to fifty-four was eight percent lower than men. One minute, I know.
Yeah, you got a minute, Megan. Okay, go ahead.
Restrictions on schools and scarce professional childcare centers have shifted additional hours of unpaid family care to families and for the most part on mothers. Ah, um, the answer to the frequently asked question of can I continue to work is too often no, and thus families have elected to not return to the classroom or to child sick care. A great quote from a Mr. Rock, uh, Rocco Rossi, President and CEO of the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, with women's labor force participation at a record low, decades of progress towards gender equity are at stake. To its economic recovery and future prosperity. Thank you for your time, Regional Council, and again, good luck on this difficult decision.
Thank you, Megan, very much. Uh, John Peters Kitchener. John, you're the next delegation. You have five minutes. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Yes, good evening, councillors. My name is John Peters. I'm a professor of Labor Studies at Lurin University. I'm also a parent. Uh, one little fellow who was here five years ago, we had the same discussion about when a center should be closing. And like Erica, I too am more than a little disappointed that we're again having this conversation five years later. And as a social scientist who studies comparative public policy and comparative labor policies and social policies, I'm also equally disappointed. Uh, almost every uh international organization, whether it's the OECD, the IMF, or the World Bank, have all talked about how we should be building back better during the current pandemic. And what they mean by that is not only developing real environmental sustainability and recovery plans, but also about actually developing our social policies, developing our labor policies and ensuring that people have good jobs and are cared for. And you know, and even these major economic institutions, which are very business and financially driven institutions, which are make typically recommendations to try and foster economic efficiency, are realizing the only way that we have resilience and the only way that our economies are going to function is that if we actually do take care of people and if we actually do have the kinds of jobs and the kinds of communities where we are able to care for one another and make sure that we all are able to balance our work and family life, or we are able to have good jobs in our communities and that all people, whether they're women, whether they're racialized communities, whether they're those who have disabilities, those who have other kinds of special needs, are looked after. And I think that's one of the key things that we have to think about, is that if we are going to build back better and if we are going to take and move forward with a universal childcare plan, which Prime Minister Trudeau and the Liberal Government have promised, then this is the time not to be talking about how we're going to take apart some of our public services, but actually thinking about how we're going to invest, how we're going to make our public services better, how we're going to make our childcare services actually universal. Because the sad fact of the matter is, at the moment, Canada is almost dead last amongst all industrial countries for their childcare services. We lack the childcare spaces. We lack the childcare accessibility. We lack the trained childcare providers who have good jobs and the training necessary to look after our children. Shifting money away at this time uh from childcare services and giving it to parents in terms of subsidies doesn't provide childcare services. All it does is take money away and leave parents suddenly in a bind, trying to find childcare uh in this very difficult time. If we were to make the same argument about our hospital services in the current crisis, about how we should take away money from our doctors or uh from our testing services and give them as terms of subsidies to individuals, I think we would think that's pretty absurd type of argument. But yet, this is the kind of argument that's being made currently by K P M G. And it's not just here at Waterloo. They've made this argument consistently over the past decade, not only in Canada, at Peel Region and across B C and now Manitoba again, Australia, in the U K, in across many states in the United States. This is an argument that they make consistently. And this is my second point. K P M G should not be providing audits for government services. They are a business consultancy firm with self-interest in terms of tax cutting and tax avoidance. They have consistently been charged uh in aiding and abetting tax evasion. In Canada, most recently, in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, again, K P M G was again uh told for uh 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 by the CRA that they had to make major changes and they had to pay fines and their clients had to pay fines because they had been establishing tax avoidance accounts uh for their clients in places like the Caribbean as well as the Isle of Man.
John, you have one minute.
Taking advice from a self-interested firm, I think is something, one thing. But to take it as a uh actual policy advice about what our democratically elected governments should be doing is quite another. What we have to realize is that at this current time, where our government resources are being stretched, where our societies are being stretched, and where all people face tremendous stresses uh in their eh eh everyday work lives as well as in their family lives, this is the time to take account about how we can actually do something better and that we have to listen to all of the people in our communities. Self-interested advice from a very large business firm uh is not the way to make democratic decisions. What we have to do instead is to listen to all these voices here this evening and think seriously about how we can, as a community and as a country, build back better and keep our childcare services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Uh, the next speaker is uh Maria Vermeer, Vermeer, and from Kitchener. Maria, welcome. You have five minutes and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maria Vermeer. I live in Kitchener. I work in management at Renescent University College at the University of Waterloo, and I'm currently completing a master's in education at the University of Toronto. Two of my children have attended Edith McIntosh Children's Centre over the past four years. I put my son on a waiting list when he was two months old. I chose five centers in the region that I felt were suitable and only ever heard back from one. Put my daughter on the waiting list the day I found out I was pregnant. She was able to enroll when she was two years old. I still only heard back from one center. I don't know if anyone on the steering committee or council has had to go through the process of enrolling an infant or toddler in care in the last five to ten years. For parents who have, this plan feels particularly tone-deaf to our lived experience. The talking points coming from the steering committee give lip service to ideas of quality and access and equity in the system. But when you read the plan, it lacks any detail that would give parents confidence that this plan will actually yield spaces that are similar in quality to the ones we are losing. Or even if it will result in notable and significant improvement in quality across the region, which I think is an admirable goal. Yes, let's raise quality of care across the system. This plan does not leave confidence that that will happen. If that's the desire, consult with experts in early childhood education and public policy, not K P M G. From what I can see, the only guarantee we are being given is the closure of these longstanding trusted quality programs and some marginal savings for the region. The recommendation is full of messages about subsidies and fee reductions, savings for the region, increased quality and measurement, but no details of how each will be prioritized. Without details, there is no assurance that this recommendation is evidence-based and will yield quality childcare options for parents. And I suggest that we have no idea what we're signing up for. The savings for the region, especially in the first year, seem inconsequential compared with the loss of community families and staff of these centers. If this plan is about saving money during COVID, it's a very poor one. Most concerning is there seems to be no immediate plan or guarantee for continued commitment on behalf of the region to funding childcare at the same level it is now. This seems to be completely out of touch with the importance of childcare for gender equity, economic recovery, and the priority us, your constituents, place on access to quality childcare. This plan offers no guarantee that these closures will result in spaces of equal quality in the region. In fact, there seems to be no immediate plan to address the loss of two hundred and seventy quality childcare spaces. I've had councillors tell me that there is no need to address that because of the current vacancies in the system due to COVID. This seems so incredibly short-sighted, it is literally astonishing. Right now, parents feel fearful about sending their children to childcare, just as they feel fearful about sending their children to school, but this is temporary. This plan relies way too heavily on a temporary situation that provides no guarantees or even a basic plan of how, when de- demand returns, and it will, that there will be quality programs, facilities, and staff to meet that demand. It also includes no insights on the potential impact for women or recovery in the region if those spaces are not available when they are needed. Finally, I would suggest the region should feel very uneasy about being complicit in contributing to greater gender pay inequity, setting up for a plan that relies on undervalued and underpaid female workers. The region should be proud of the well-paid and quality staff at these centers and should not undervalue this work in this way. Twenty twenty has been a very hard year. Please don't add to the grief by taking away these important communities of support for our children. I'm here to strongly advocate that childcare is not an area where you should be looking for savings. And this plan falls grossly short of guaranteeing quality childcare options for family, families right now, in the immediate future, and in years to come. We deserve better than this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Maria. Samantha Smith from of Kitchener, you're the next delegation and you have five minutes. Welcome, Samantha. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair and members of Regional Council. My name is Samantha. I live in Kitchener and I currently work in a licensed childcare located in Waterloo. Today, I would like to speak to you regarding the consideration to close the five Waterloo Regional Children's Center, to which I urge you to choose not to. While in school, I completed a placement within a Waterloo Regional Children's Center, and my experience there truly helped define the standard of care that all programs should work to meet, and it demonstrated what quality care really is. To begin, the educators at the Regional Children's Center that I was placed at radiate with passion for what they do. They demonstrated kindness, empathy, integrity, and they held themselves to a professional standard unlike any other I've seen in the field. The educators worked tirelessly to support each child in their program, and that was reflected in the responsive relationships they built with the children and their families. While working as a placement student, I felt valued and supported by not only my cooperating educator, but from educators in other classrooms, as well as the supervisor and assistant supervisor. Overall, they created a positive work environment that fostered growth and creativity, and that was directly seen in the work, in their work with the children. It is vital to recognize, recognize the work that they do. It is vital to recognize the work that they do because not only do these educators work to literally build the neural connections in the brains of our children, they help set the foundation for the future. In the nineteen sixties, there was a longitudinal study conducted by psychologist Wykart and this study is known as the Perry Preschool Project. The Perry Preschool Project worked to determine the impact and the role that high-quality education plays in negating the impacts of adversity. Forty years following the beginning of this study, researchers found that children who participated in the Perry Preschool Program were more likely to have graduated from high school, were more likely to hold a job and have higher earnings, and they committed fewer crimes. Examples of how this was financially reflected is that the government saved over seven thousand dollars per child in education resources, over a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars per child in crime savings. And the long-term results from the children being in this program led to an overall return of twelve dollars and ninety cents per dollar invested in the program. This study set the groundwork for the high scope approach, which is the curriculum model the Waterloo Regional Children's Centres have adapted to aid in early intervention with at-risk children in their programs. In addition to this, in response to an email I had sent councillor Elizabeth Clark regarding the consideration to close the children's centres, she stated the need to redistribute and reallocate funds in a way that makes childcare more accessible and equitable to all children and to improve the quality of care across all licensed centres. While I recognize our region's need to reallocate funds and to respond to the projected twenty-five million dollar deficit we're facing in twenty twenty-one, I also recognize the importance of the work done within the regional centres. In the review conducted by KPMG, there were four other viable options to reduce the operating costs of the children's centres, those of which included the option to close one of the five centres and redeploy the staff throughout the remaining four, allowing those centres to operate at full capacity. I feel that there are more options presented with the opportunities to continue serving our community while saving the jobs and livelihoods of sixty-two professionals and these options need to be reconsidered. In closing, the Waterloo Regional Children's Centres have dedicated professionals that have set the tone for quality care. My concern is that if the priority was to truly make quality care that is equitable and accessible
You have one minute, Samantha.
Thank you. My concern is that if the priority was to truly provide quality care that is equitable and accessible to all children and families in our region, then closing all five of the Waterloo Regional Children's Centres is counterproductive and not only a great loss to our community, but also service to the children and families within it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Samantha. Ina Ledbetter, North Dumfries, welcome. You're the next delegation. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much for providing me with the opportunity to speak to you today. So my name is Anya Ledbetter and I am from North Dumfries. I am currently not a parent of a child at any of the daycare centres run by the region, but I do have experience with them in that both of my boys did attend Christopher Children's Centre and so they're now in the public school sector and it's been quite a number of years since they've been there. But I wanted to come here to speak to you because I know firsthand the value of high-quality childcare and the impact that it has on children and really also on women. I can tell you my personal experience with our region care. So we had experience with home care, we had experience with private daycare centres and we ended up at Christopher Children's Centre. And you know, you've heard a lot of people speak today to the quality of childcare that's provided in our region centres. And you know, I just wanted to echo that so very strongly. They are very much more than childcare centres and I would go farther to say that they're really community hubs. So our experience with Christopher Children's Centre was that it really was our community. The way others have spoken about it, you know, they really became part of our family and part of our community in raising our children. And you know, to the point where when my father passed away, staff members came to support my sons, you know, to the visitation. So it was, you know, they talk about going above and beyond in terms of the professionals that attend there and the lasting impact that they've had on my children. I'd also echo that I know a lot of, you know, families have great experiences in our region centre with children with special needs that have not been able to find great childcare options within the marketplace. So you know, there is a real niche there that the region provides that really can't be met through other daycare options. I really wanted to, you know, aside from my own personal experience, wanted to talk a little bit about the impact that this decision is going to have on women and children in our community. We've heard that, you know, the importance of quality accessible childcare to enable women to participate in the labour market is fundamental. So five years ago, I spoke to council about the same thing, you know, that has not changed. And in fact, you know, with the pandemic, many of the people that are still working in precarious employment situations are women. And so that need still exists. I would also say that, you know, we know that the care in the regional centres is exceptional. We know that the quality of care is very high. I would also just say that, you know, as an added element, I think it's incredibly important as a governmental institution to offer care because government at the end of the day is in the business of trust and confidence and providing trust and confidence to the community. And by running daycare centres, operating daycare centres that we as a community can trust and that we have some, you know, say in, you know, is really important. These centres are held to higher standards. We know as parents that they're held to a higher standards. We can trust that and we trust that they're caring for our children. I would also say that, you know, it's really important to consider the good quality jobs that these centres provide. I know that's been said a couple of times already. I also worry about, you know, taking the two hundred and fifty-two spaces, taking the reallocated staff funding, putting it into the community.
Anya, you've got one minute, sorry.
Thank you. Putting into the community to create three to seven hundred more spaces. To me, the math doesn't add up, you know, and again, you're going to be creating, you know, more undervalued and underpaid positions in the community and that's not generally, I think, a good path forward. Just to conclude, you know, I really think that where we spend our money and consequently where we cut says an awful lot about a community and says a lot about what we value as a community. And so I really implore you as leaders and as decision makers to think about this impact, to think about the impact of the decision and the choice that you have on our community and what the message that you will send is by closing five really important centres. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I understand that some of you wanted to ask questions. This is a listening exercise and we do have forty-nine delegations. I have not seen any hands raised. I will continue to cast my eyes over this. Apparently, the icon does work if you want to ask questions. So if you have a burning question you need to ask, I'd ask you to keep it to one question and not make it a statement. And we'll continue. We have lots of people to hear from. Jacqueline Fountain from Cambridge, you are next. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Sorry, my... There we go. Okay. I would like to begin by pointing out that the timing of this meeting poses a barrier to those with young children as it falls during the bedtime rush. Were I a single parent, I would be unable to attend and speak up for our wonderful childcare centres. My son has attended Kinsman Children's Centre in Cambridge since October twenty nineteen when he joined the toddler programme. Choosing who will care for your most vulnerable loved ones is a decision that I don't think any parent takes lightly. We initially had a spot saved at a for-profit childcare centre because they were the only one who had a space. The centre, they packed children into rooms, they followed the laws of the childhood age ratios, but with fifteen toddlers in a single room, the atmosphere was chaotic at best. And with one E C E and two helpers per room, I was concerned that they didn't value expertise. Their outdoor facilities were situated in a parking lot next to busy streets and a highway without grass or trees anywhere in sight. When we heard that Kinsman was going to have some spots opening up, we jumped at the chance for a tour. The differences were stark. The Kinsman Centre felt so much more welcoming. One of my key questions was regarding staff turnover. Friends had told me stories about centres where it took a new teacher every few weeks for a toddler who was still working out, which were working out how relationships work and who they can trust. This is a stressful at best and at worst actually harm their ability to form deep connections. The kids bond so strongly with the safe adults in their lives and I love that Kinsman encourages this. I was relieved to learn that many of the teachers at Kinsman had been there for decades and seemed to enjoy working there. I strongly believe that those in care roles deserve to be paid well for their skilled work and sadly, in childcare, this is often not the case. To learn that the centre's employees enjoyed protection from a union as well. The teachers at the Kinsman are all E C Es with additional training and high scope philosophy that empowers children planning things out and developing emotional intelligence. In many areas of the report, it references a widespread shortage of qualified E C Es. But being that there is no corresponding widespread desire to pay them a good wage, I am not sure how the shortfall will be addressed. Early childhood education is about so much more than simply keeping children physically safe and making sure that they are alive at the end of the day. Kinsman truly elevates care. I feel that we will be forced to lower our expectations if these centres are closed. The minimum standards set by the province and the region do not ensure good quality childcare, just the kids are alive at the end of the day. Trying to increase spaces in the region by eliminating five of our gold standard centres, a potential net gain of approximately a hundred care spaces, sounds like trying to build a mountain by first digging a hole. By doing so, you would also be upending the lives of seventy-two children and their families rather than finding ways to keep these beautiful examples functioning. The forty-five special needs children may not even be able to find appropriate care with other centres. These centres also help the region stay informed as to the state of childcare in a more personal way. Without the region-run centres, it would be more difficult to collect unbiased field data and run pilot studies. The central difficulty with these centres is also a big part of what drives their quality, competitive wages for those providing care. If those crucial frontline positions are eliminated, that will slide childcare in the region as a whole backwards towards the minimum standards and mediocrity. We should be finding ways to elevate the childcare in the region to the standard rather than moving some of our best examples to ensure standardization at a lower level of quality.
Jacqueline, you have one minute.
If we are forced to make concessions and accept an imperfect option, then option three, to lease the centres to a community operator from the report would provide at least some cost savings while still attempting to maintain these spaces. In the F A Q, it is stated that it is not considered financially viable by the steering committee, but no further details explaining that. There are no further details explaining why. I am sympathetic to the financial burden that COVID-nineteen has placed on all regions and municipalities, but these burdens should not be offloaded onto young families and those already struggling. Childcare enables us to make a living and offering a choice between no childcare or childcare in a more crowded setting will force many families to go down to one income. Others already struggling will have no option at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. And we do acknowledge that this wasn't the best time when you're putting kids to bed, but thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us. Laurie Prospero, co-chair, Early Years Coalition Waterloo Region, welcome Laurie, you have five minutes.
Chair Redman, good evening councillors and delegates. Tonight, I am speaking to you on behalf of the Early Years Coalition Waterloo Region, which is comprised of parents, educators and other professionals in the early learning and childcare sector in support of affordable, high-quality, universal childcare that includes professional pay and decent working conditions for educators. In addition, I'm also the executive director of Owl Childcare Services of Ontario. Owl is a nonprofit and operates eight high-quality childcare centres and nineteen before and after school programmes across the region, representing over twelve hundred licensed spaces. When I first entered the ELCC sector in two thousand and six and learned that the region was not only the funder and the system manager, but also a direct competitor, I immediately identified that as a conflict of interest. I questioned why the region would put themselves in that position and wondered to what extent they received additional provincial funding to do so, putting nonprofit centres at a disadvantage. If this recommendation had come forward in two thousand and six, I might have spoken to council at that time in support of closing these centres. But you see, I was new to Waterloo Region and new to the early learning and childcare sector and I had a lot to learn. Now fifteen years later, I'm better educated about the system and so tonight I'm here with a different message. I'm here to oppose the recommendation to close the region's directly operated childcare centres. Why the change of heart? Because I've taken time to listen, to observe, to understand and to lead. As a result, I know and I firmly believe that publicly run childcare centres, like those directly operated by this region, contribute to the leadership, growth and quality of the overall system and it enhances your role as the system manager. So with that being said, a few things for your consideration. Waterloo Region is listed as a daycare desert. I won't go into that, it was mentioned before. But that same report also indicates that a hundred percent of centres in this region have a waiting list. While this report was written B C, before COVID, I took a look at our waitlist stats for Owl. Across our organisation, we have over twenty-seven hundred children on a waiting list with an average of one hundred and sixty-six new applications every month, down only from one hundred and eighty-five new applications per month before COVID. The KPMG report recognizes that operating capacity is currently down across the region as many parents work from home or have not yet felt comfortable enough to return to childcare centres. It's true, but on a call earlier this week with over a hundred childcare supervisors, we heard that full-day programmes for children's birth to age four are closer to capacity and that COVID has significantly impacted school age enrollment more significantly. Despite this, our waiting lists are getting longer with some parents simply deferring their spots until they feel more comfortable or until COVID is under Experts warn that the shortage of licensed childcare spaces due to daycare deserts and the presence of long waiting lists puts added stress on families and puts children in precarious situations. Efforts for childcare affordability need to be combined with the initiatives to create and increase the number of licensed spaces. In light of a provincial target to increase childcare availability and in consideration of our region being named a daycare desert, we cannot afford to lose a single childcare space. In considering the decision before you, I urge you councillors to remember that the effects of early learning and care on children is the most important thing to consider and should be the focus of any cost benefit analysis. The Early Development Instrument, or EDI for short, assesses children's ability to meet age-appropriate developmental milestones across five areas. Things like physical health and wellbeing, social competence, emotional maturity, language, communication and general knowledge. The most recent EDI report for this region shows that the number of children vulnerable in one of the five domains is higher than the provincial average and those vulnerable in two or more domains is still higher than the provincial average. Waterloo Region kids are struggling. We know that participation in early learning and care programmes prior to kindergarten positively impacts their development and our EDI scores. The region's ELCC service plan proudly shares its vision that Waterloo Region is a community where all children thrive. To achieve this, the plan states that we serve the community by providing responsive, inclusive programmes. We engage with families and with community partners to provide high-quality services.
Laurie, you have one minute.
Thank you. We inspire by supporting and creating innovative early learning environments where all children belong. Directly operating these centres supports the achievement of your vision and mission. It provides a benchmark for quality, curriculum design, environmental design and more. It provides the region with lived experiences on the challenges and benefits of childcare operations, which provides a more fulsome perspective when making system-level decisions. And it provides professional pay and decent working conditions for early childhood educators and acts as a necessary benchmark for the labour force where forty-five percent of E C Es earn less than twenty dollars an hour. Council is forward-thinking and quite diverse and we've been witness to great outcomes as a result of your leadership. The Patrick system of childcare across Canada has never been ideal, but now at a time when the federal government is stepping up, it's not the time to cut spaces here. So tonight, I call on you, on behalf of early childhood educators and families, I call you to greatness to support children and families and to keep these centres open. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie, impressive timing.
I cut a few things out.
Two seconds left. Very well done. Carrie Lynn Poole Cottonam, Social Services Chair, Q P. Welcome, Carrie Lynn. You have five minutes and you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Lynn Poole Cottonam and I come from the largest union in Canada, the Canadian Public Employees, one of the loudest champions for public childcare across this country. The one benefit of coming from the largest union in Canada is that we have a dedicated team of researchers who are able to dig in to reports that are presented by KPMG and other consulting firms as well as staff reports. The region has received a lot of information on the decision to close their childcare centres. KPMG presented five scenarios for the region to consider, not least of which was one to maintain the service and to further invest in it. The only decision before you tonight is to divest and close down a much-needed and desirable resource that seeks to serve the community where others cannot. The information in the staff report does not tell the whole The information in the staff report does not tell the whole story. There are material challenges to aspects of the data that the region seeks to use to simply avoid the political reality that an appropriate tax increase is required to maintain and invest in services. The main issues are a misleading calculation of overall savings, a disregard for the collective agreement of QP eighteen eighty-three members and its associated costs, and data that has not been considered to fully make an informed decision. First is worth noting that KPMG clearly advised council of the risks to closure of the centres, and they are highlighted. A loss of high-quality spaces, reputational risk, ignoring the needs of families with children of special needs, loss of good jobs in the community, and labour relations impact, which includes a potential cost of six point four million dollars, erasing any cost savings. I want to offer you some more detail and key questions for consideration. Much of the savings that are being calculated are based on simply severing the region's workers. Keep in mind that a competitive compensation package of regional workers earn is based on specific qualifications and standards of care that are recognised as a high benchmark. The two point four million dollars in annual bargaining unit staffing costs would be all but erased in the first year of annual savings due to severance. But there is another factor that has not been examined, and that is redeployment. The collective agreement contains an agreement to allow workers to bid on other jobs they must be for. Depending on how many workers access this process, it could result in a protected placement process that may impact other workers and has a cost attached to it. Imagine that workers opt to take redeployment process, and it could take months of work to place these workers and result in layoffs in other places. This process has a cost and is not considered in the cost benefit analysis. The KPMG report suggests that if services were wound down, the centre buildings could be sold. Context is important here, and a current pandemic context, there is no promise that these buildings will be able to offload in a timely fashion, and moreover, no guarantee of a proper market value sale. Unfortunately, release and sale signs are all too common in our neighbourhoods, creating a very competitive market. If buildings cannot be sold at an appropriate price, the region remains on the hook to carry those real estate costs. Why not instead continuing to offer high-quality childcare as many parents have expressed tonight? The issue of savings through avoiding capital costs was featured in the KPMG report. And no doubt, this is a seductive option for councillors. However, the region itself brags that they have a triple-A credit, triple-A credit rating for twenty straight years, demonstrating excellent financial health, and the current context is important here as well.
Carrie Lynn, you have one minute left.
Wallowing costs are at a historic low, and the region has proved it has no difficulty meeting existing financial capital costs of this one. The net value of levy savings is calculated at six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and the correct number to focus on budgeting processes. There's another important point of consideration that has not been factored, and that is a current legislative review of childcare. This means that things could significantly change when it comes to childcare and the quality. Finally, the region is risking goodwill between its workers and the community. This also has a cost and simply should be avoided by continuing to provide quality services to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie Lynn. Next speaker is Carrie Lynn Scott from Almyra. It says Doug Martin, but is that Carrie?
Yes, Carrie here. Hi, my name is Carrie Lynn Scott. I'm a mother of two kids from Almyra, Ontario. My three-year-old currently attends the Almyra Centre. I'm on maternity leave right now, but if I don't have a spot for my infant, that could impact my ability to return to work. And we rely on a single income. The biggest challenge is that there is a lack of childcare availability in Almyra, especially for infants. Our experience at the centre has been amazing over the past several years. The staff are highly trained, well-paid, which leads to very low staff turnover. These are comparatively high-paying jobs in a female-dominated field, which means that they may not be able to find employment or will be forced to do so with a cut of income. And I truly feel these jobs are worth protecting. Families should have the right to access high-quality childcare services of their choice. One could argue it's impacting the rights of individuals, children, and specifically women by taking away this choice of licensed childcare. Once private childcare is established and delivers a considerable proportion of childcare services, the local government is less able to monitor or enforce the quality requirements.
Hi, my name's Brad Lynn Scott. I'm Carrie's husband. Five years ago, this was voted on, fourteen to one, almost unanimous to keep the centres open. What has changed so much in five years? These centres have been around for decades, and suddenly they are unaffordable? We received an email titled, "Parent Meeting on Thursday, November twelfth", which was six days ago. I would like to read from it. "We will be sharing the results of the third-party review of the children's centre and the next steps. We encourage you to attend this meeting as the outcome of this review could impact the childcare services you are receiving." How could parents know you are planning on closing the centres based on this email? I feel every step was taken to keep this as quiet as possible. My wife had to inform our ward councillors that this was even being considered. That was four days ago. You have chosen a time when COVID- nineteen dominates the news cycle. You have given us little time to put together any semblance of resistance to closing these childcare centres. During a pandemic, when parents have more than they can deal with, you have added more stress and worry. This whole process has not felt transparent or collaborative. These are not the type of actions I would expect from our community leaders.
Our ask to counsel is simple. We want more thought and consultation to be put in place and that the region of Waterloo comes back with a clear, evidence-based plan to achieve a net increase of the same quality before there's a vote to close these centres. In addition, I understand that the Almyra situation could be handled a little bit differently. As you can appreciate, parents are still concerned about what the future of our who will this new operator be? Who will the, how will the kids transition at this centre or this site? What does the programme look like? Will there be ample infant spots that are so hard to come by in this area? Is the cost going to be comparable? And most importantly, will the quality live up to the same levels that we are currently receiving? I acknowledge that councillors have a very tough task ahead of them, given the current economic climate and impacts of COVID- nineteen. But cutting childcare services in the middle of a pandemic is not a solution to economic recovery. We need to ensure that mothers can get back to work and that parents' ability to work is not hampered by a lack of quality, early learning and childcare. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. The next delegation is Kinga Subject from Kitchener, and Kinga, you have five minutes and you have the floor, welcome.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen today. We all understand that during these unprecedented times, you are faced with impossible decisions and budget pressures, and your work for the betterment of our community is much appreciated. The report from KPMG states that new parents and newcomers are not aware of the region's children's centres and are therefore at a disadvantage in obtaining care. I would agree. Prior to becoming a mom for the first time, I had no idea what one list was or that the region even had directly operated childcare centres. I learned about it at a midwife appointment when a fellow mom-to-be asked if I had put my unborn baby on one list yet. We live in downtown Kitchener, and the closest childcare centre to my house was Edith McIntosh Centre. So that was my top choice, solely based on proximity. Almost a year after I returned to work, I finally got a call saying that a space had opened up for us. It was the first call I received from any provider in fair proximity to our house. For almost a year, I was driving to June for care and then driving back in the other direction to work in Guelph at seven fifteen a.m. for a not-so-great job where I earned a not-so-great wage. Most of my earnings went to childcare, and some days I wondered why I wasn't just staying home to take care of our daughter myself. When the spot opened up at Edith McIntosh Centre, it made a big impact in our lives. Having reliable childcare in our neighbourhood eased some serious stress, and our family flourished. I was able to secure better employment. Proximity matters, and in downtown Kitchener, there are simply not enough spaces or providers. In the KPMG report, under Summary of Strengths for Collective Stakeholders, under the Diversity and Inclusivity tab, it states, and I quote, "The children's centres are located in communities that are difficult for non-regional childcare centres to operate due to, for example, financial viability." So if these spaces are eliminated and outside providers don't want to come serve our communities on the basis of financial viability, who will care for our children? So yes, naturally, anyone who doesn't know about the centres is at a disadvantage. But that is not the fault of the centres themselves or the families whose children are being served, served in them. That is an, that is a one-list problem. It is a marketing problem. The report from KPMG and the media seems to present the families attending these centres as well-off or with better opportunities and connections. It paints us in a light of somehow being the elite few, and that is simply not the case. We all waited on a waitlist, some because of proximity, some because these centres could take a child with severe allergies, some because these centres would have a space for a child with special needs. We waited. There needs to be more equitable access to top-notch care in our region, absolutely. But for that to happen, these centres, which set a benchmark in the community for excellent care, need to stay open. People need options. There needs to be, needs to be a better solution to the problem than closing down the centres and eliminating hundreds of spaces altogether. There needs to be a better answer than putting compassionate, knowledgeable childcare experts, most of whom are women, out of work. I do not believe that divesting the directly operated centres will provide the level of funding needed to address the budget pressures and may in fact erode the system by eliminating hundreds of spaces. I believe that if you eliminate these spaces with the current economic climate and the budget struggles, these spaces will be lost for good. The KPMG report offers that the money saved from the closures can be reallocated to support three hundred and fifty to seven hundred and ninety-one spaces. It doesn't state that this may, this many new spaces
Kinga, you have a minute left.
Thank you. There will, there, where will, so again, I ask the question, where will families in these communities that these centres serve go for care post-COVID? I now have three children and am on maternity leave. Without accessible quality care in my community, I am now faced with the impossible decision to not return to work next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kinga. Danielle Hopkins, Kitchener, you are the next delegation, welcome. Danielle, and you have the floor.
Hello, council. First, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Danielle Hopkins, and I'm a parent of a three-year-old daughter who currently attends Edith McIntosh Child Centre and has since October two thousand and nineteen. I also have a son due this September, this December, who is on the waiting list to attend Edith Mac. I would like to speak to the quality of care my daughter has received over the past year, particularly regarding extra concerns we have had with her development as she was born significantly premature. She was born three months early, which has come with a large variety of additional health concerns. The support the centre has provided my family has been immeasurable. The staff truly have her best interests at heart, and they're often the first to voice any potential concerns and make sure that our family is connected with the proper supports and resources. Prior to getting a space at Edith McIntosh, our daughter was enrolled in regional home childcare and later in a private childcare centre. Despite being certified by the region, our home care provider gave our young child very little supervision or guidance in her development, and she certainly never took the initiative to help our family with any support through KW rehabilitation or kids' ability like Edith McIntosh has. The lack of supervision led us to moments where we were genuinely concerned for child safety. And despite us being vocal with our regional home daycare coordinator, our concerns were never properly addressed, which forced us to look for other care options. In addition, our home care provider frequently called us in the early morning, telling us she was ill, which left us responsible to scramble to find care before we had to leave for work. On those days, our child would be placed in the homes of total strangers we only met moments before, because that is the solution that regional home care proposes for absences. Our daughter's private centre placement had extremely high staff turnover, which meant that none of the educators had the time to truly get to know our child or become invested in her development goals. It was difficult for us to keep track of and communicate with her educators. She did not receive the proper educational support she needed there either. The steering committee states that their intention is to increase the quality of childcare programmes through new quality enhancement supports and quality measurements. However, no concrete information has been provided on how this will actually be achieved. While I agree that creating more childcare spaces is an important goal, I'm concerned over the lack of childcare spaces available in the downtown Kitchener core, and if the region's proposed new model will create a high enough volume of local spaces that will actually provide quality affordable care. The wait times to get into both private and regionally-run centres pre-pandemic were high. We were often experiencing two-year wait times to get our daughter into childcare centres. Parents, particularly women, are more likely to leave the workforce if they feel their child isn't being adequately cared for or if there aren't any accessible, local and affordable childcare options. I myself have made the decision to take an eighteen-month maternity leave with my son rather than a twelve-month leave because I know how hard it was to secure childcare space for a twelve-month-old last time around. This affects my family financially, it affects my personal career goals, and it affects my employer by creating a longer absence. I believe that the steering committee review is looking at the bottom line without addressing the broader human impact that regionally-run childcare has on our community. I think that we as a community need to spend more time evaluating how to move forward rather than rushing this crucial decision, which will have a massive impact for young families in this region. I would also ask you to consider the value of having fairly paid job opportunities available in Waterloo Region for early childhood educators, especially our educators that valiantly step forward to provide care for children of essential workers during the height of the pandemic shutdown. Thank you so much for your time and considerations.
Thank you very much, Danielle. The next delegation is Silvana Cortez from Cambridge, welcome Silvana, you have the floor and you have five minutes. You don't see them on the list? Okay, we're not seeing anybody in the meeting for Silvana Cortez, so Silvana Cortez, are you Amy Gamsby at the moment? Okay, Amy's the next delegation, so if Silvana surfaces, we will hear her. Amy Gamsby, New Hamburg, welcome Amy, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Amy Gamsby. My three-year-old attends Edith McIntosh, and my seven-month-old is currently on the waitlist. I can say so much and give numerous examples, just as everyone else speaking today, about the extraordinary level of care this region centre provides. Prior to getting off the waitlist, my daughter attended a home daycare. Upon switching and arriving at Edith McIntosh, husband and I could not believe the night and day difference. The level of knowledge the staff has and dedication showed to the kids is outstanding. They quickly took the time to personally get to know my daughter and myself, every day providing me with little glimpses into her day, telling us funny stories or surprising knowing this was happening with every child in the centre and that it was due to the genuine caring and loving environment, as well as the culture the staff had created, made my husband and I joke many times that we wish we could trade places with her. Our daughter has developed and grown at Edith McIntosh, and it has given me such confidence in her abilities to succeed going forward for when she starts kindergarten. This is all due to the hard-working staff at the childcare centre, and I hope my son will get to have the same experience in development. Looking at the KPMG report, I can see there are some adjustments that should probably be made. However, I think it would be a disaster to the region if you would close all five centres. The centres are not of the region pride due to the quality of service they provide. With such a rapidly growing population, childcare centres are at the heart of a developing economy by allowing parents to work. This is key coming out of a pandemic. Having choice in childcare providers is also important to a diverse community, which has many different needs, such as Waterloo Region. Childcare is an essential service, and it requires a range of choices and options for all families. Closing these centres will omit the choice The waitlist in the region are a problem, especially for infant spots, as well as children's with special needs and allergies. I put my daughter on multiple wait lists when I was three months pregnant. She did not get a spot anywhere until she turned two. Waiting all that time was very stressful on my fam, family. One childcare provider in the region even laughed at me, saying they had a three-year waitlist, and my daughter would be going to school by the time her name popped up. Due to these waitlists, we had to use a home daycare, which greatly affected our work life. I'm a teacher and my husband is self-employed. To use this home daycare, we had to adjust our schedules in order to meet early pickup times. I love being involved in my school community and coached two sports after school during the year, as well as offered my students extra help in the mornings. When my daughter was not at Edith McIntosh, I could not do those things. It took a toll on me personally as I realized how much being involved in my community helped my mental health. And when I could not do that, I started to lose the joy I had in my job. Now with the threat of closing these centers, I am struggling with the possibility that I may not be able to coach for three years if my son has to use a different childcare provider. The location of Edith McIntosh allows me to stay after school and coach, as well as deal with early morning problems when students need extra help. I'm not alone in this. Many parents at these regional centers are teachers and it's shared between schools whenever someone is expecting a child, that they need to get them onto one of these lists. This is how well respected and important these childcare providers are in our school community. These centers are seen as leaders in the area of childcare and development and are held in very high regard. Eliminating spots in hopes new ones will arise during our current economy is a risk not worth taking. Providing additional subsidies does not directly reflect in an increase in available spots or even have any guarantee of increasing quality with other providers. Please strongly consider some other recommendations made in the report as I believe quality of service the region provides currently outweighs the additional quantity-
Amy, you have one minute left.
Although this is a tough decision, a combination of cost-cutting measures and parent increases should be the first steps in lessening the impact on the regional budget. They can have immediate positive effects without relying on external factors. Please help us save our regional childcare centers.
Thank you, Amy. The next speaker is Jane Mitchell from Waterloo. Jane, you have five minutes and you have the floor. You're on mute, Jane.
Try unmute there, now, start, okay. Hello, everybody, and nice to see you all again. The pandemic is not the time to close the regional daycares. The closing of the regional daycares was rejected in two thousand and fifteen for several reasons. Some of those reasons still stand, and now there are more reasons to reject this proposal. The parents whose children attend the regional daycares need good quality care, like all parents. Some of the children have disabilities. With the extreme shortage of daycare spaces, any parent who gets a good spot wins the lottery. Do not use that statement against them suggesting they are privileged. How are they privileged? Elmira's Children's Center is the only daycare in Elmira. You are well aware that I know there are quality nonprofit spaces, just that there are not enough. Right now, daycares are running at seventy percent due to COVID, two thousand empty spaces and fifty at the regional daycares. Here's the problem with those figures. They are temporary vacancies caused by the coronavirus pandemic. All children and all of the waiting lists will return when parents return to work. Even working at home, you cannot work properly at a job and look after a child or children at the same time. Regional spaces will- What happens to the physical buildings and equipment? In the last go-round of this idea, it was found that existing daycare providers were not interested in taking over the regional daycares. At that time, the union with its higher wages and benefits had to be a part of the sale. I expect their desire would be even less when they are dealing with the effects of COVID. KPMG has stated that the regional daycares are not efficient. Why? The daycares are unionized and the staff get paid what ECE should be paid. Kudos to the person who thought up the statistic that ten percent of the childcare money goes to one point nine percent of the children who go to the regional daycares. Region-owned Sunnyside Home gets a greater percentage of regional money than the other homes for the aged. And Waterloo region's social housing gets a greater percentage of regional funds than the other nonprofit housing. Similar statistics can be made for both those important social services. With this reasoning, obviously, they are next on the chopping block. My children and grandchildren attended the quality nonprofit daycare I founded and was the first president. It was not easy for a group of working parents to build and run a daycare, many sacrifices. Why should those lost spaces be recreated by the working parents who are now going through serious financial losses and stress due to COVID? Two new schools will also have daycares added in the near future. Our region will still be growing with new families after the pandemic. Those schools and daycares are for student growth. The spaces of the regional daycares will be gone. Who thought up the idea that it was unfair for the region to run its own daycare programs? Programs that existed before the region became the childcare service manager. Parents and children should lose their spots because somehow it is unfair for them to have a daycare spot. Am I to assume daycare spots will disappear simply due to a philosophical, I can't even bring myself to say moral, reason? Selling the regional daycares is a Band-Aid solution to a continuing problem. Despite many promises, a lack of federal and provincial movement to create a daycare system that mirrors our public education system. Please, regional council, you need to find a temporary solution for the bleeding COVID childcare problem, not a permanent one. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I, we have Silvana Cortez from Cambridge who has joined us. Silvana, we called you earlier and you weren't in the meeting, are you prepared to speak now? You have five minutes.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, so I just got this news, I believe on Friday, yes? And I believe it's unfair to close five daycares that are the best on Cambridge. It's not their regular daycares, they are the best ones on the whole, on the whole area. And if we took these all five, where these kids are gonna go? The parents are not gonna be able to work, study, or however reasons they have the kids on the centers because some kids go for special disabilities and they have to go. So what I'm wondering, you guys are planning to close these whole five centers and you guys are not thinking also that you are not giving too much notice to the parents, to the teachers, to the whole staff? What's gonna happen to the whole staff? I believe like i- if you guys have this plan a long time ago, you guys should give like more time ahead because right now we have five centers, what's gonna happen with all these kids and where they're gonna go? I believe like the other centers are, that the other daycare centers that they are pu- uh, sorry, they are, they we have on Cambridge are not good enough. I, I have opportunity to see other centers and the kids, they don't learn nothing. They don't take care of the kids, they don't care about the kids. So personally, I think Cambridge Children's Center, it's an extraordinary center and I visit Christopher and Kinsman and it's also really, really good. And they have really good staff. So it's not only like we're closing this center, we also have to think they are the best one on all Cambridge. So we are gonna take out a really good quality and service of daycares and preschool. I think that's not fair. Because now if we take, took these five day- centers, the parents are just gonna have to put their kids in another center and they're, they're just gonna put it because they don't have a place to put, to have the kids. But they're not gonna feel safe. Some parents are gonna say, no, I prefer it don't work, I prefer it don't study because my kid's not gonna be- So I think you should consider it and don't close in it. Because after this pandemic ends, there's gonna be a lot of parents that they already have kids and they're gonna born, that they're gonna need the center. So it's not only that the kids that are right now, they are the new babies that are coming because a lot of parents have babies on this pandemic and they're having more babies next year. So where all these kids are gonna go? We're gonna have more kids on Cambridge. So I, I think that it's not a good idea to close it because the, these centers give a lot of quality of service and all the staff are very organized and they really care about the kids. So are we're gonna find the same quality of service in another daycares that are private? I don't think so. I didn't, don't think so because I have the chance to put my kids in another centers. And I didn't find any center that is in, in comparison with the centers that Waterloo offers. So I will appreciate if-
Silvana, you have one minute left?
Yeah, I will appreciate if there is any other solution so you guys don't close it and we can keep this center so that parents can still have their kids on a safe center. That's the most important thing because I see other daycares, they are not safe for kids at all. I don't know why they still open, but they are not safe. So that's it and I hope eh, they don't close the five center and the kids can still have a place where they can go play and learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Silvana. Brennan Bell from Kitchener, you're the next delegation. You have five minutes and welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess first I'd like to say thanks for, for taking the time to, to hear us out. My wife was just sitting beside me here, but you know, we have two kids ourselves, so it's a tough time of night, as I'm sure a lot of people on the, on the call here know. But anyway, just went twenty twenty, couldn't get worse, it did. As we were blindsided by the news that our daycare could be pulled. Our family is in complete disbelief by how everything is transpiring. And it really hasn't even been a week since the news broke and here we are. We weren't even gonna attend the initial call as the email invite was vague. But when we dropped our boy off at daycare and we go to Edith McIntosh last Thursday, it was kind of hinted that, you know, you might wanna be on that call because you know, something might be coming and we still kind of, oh, okay, well, we'll go to work and, and wham, like, like a train, that evening it hit us. Now that everything's out in the open, cutting our children's centers, the staff is something we just still can't get our heads around. We keep hearing, you know, it hasn't been a decision that's made lightly. And well, yeah, and, and we also keep hearing that all the vacancy in the area, you know, it's, it's all there, like it, but that really hasn't been our experience. Points made earlier by some of the other speakers about COVID impacting the enrollment really ought to be taken into consideration. So about us, we're a, a family with two boys, I don't know if we're allowed to show pictures, but they're kind of our pride and joy, so there they are. But Parker, he's our eldest, he's four years old and Miles is eighteen months. And of course, we thought that maybe they could even be on the call, but that didn't work out. But Parker's story, we didn't realize how difficult it was to find quality childcare until we went looking for it. We jumped on the one list and, and started the lengthy wait. What's interesting, I guess, about Parker though is that he has a severe peanut allergy. And while we waited on the list, we were rejected by several home daycares in the area. And that was really difficult for us because we were on the list to get into, I think we had five different daycares that we had chosen that we thought met our family's needs. We just weren't getting in. But what was tough was that the people who were rejecting us, they were saying, well, you know, we really just can't, like, how are we supposed to have him here and serve, you know, peanut butter to the other kids? We were just beside ourselves because he was our firstborn and we just, how, how could that be more important than, you know, proper care for our boy? Anyway, when, when we weren't able to get into any home daycares either, that my wife's mat leave had passed, we basically just cobbled together makeshift solutions between temporary or part-time nannies and family members. Finally, after about nineteen months, we got in at Edith McIntosh. And the time was just, everything, everything had changed. We noticed developmental gains on a weekly and daily basis. And it truly felt like we were leaving our boy with family, which is exactly what the incredible staff at Edith McIntosh is. Like they are, they are truly family and in some case maybe even a little bit better than some family. So fast forward, and Parker's in JK, an S.K. split, and he's the youngest in his class. He was born in November and despite his age, teacher, his teacher continues to comment on how well adjusted he is, complimenting his speech and his general thoughtfulness to those around him. And, and we're really proud of him and, and have a lot of credit to give to Edith McIntosh for making that work. Miles is our, our little guy and, and this is kind of fresh for us, so he's eighteen months now, or just over eighteen months, I suppose he's nineteen months. My wife just finished an eighteen-month mat leave. And with Miles, he was-
Brennan, you have one minute.
Okay. He was accepted into Edith McIntosh, but then due to, to the impact of COVID, he lost his spot. So that applies some, some pressure and some stress to us, but then a, a spot reopened and he got in. But no sooner are we, you know, balancing out as a family unit and, and now we're right back to, to feeling like we're completely upside down. So anyways, my wife, she's been back to work, work for a little under a month following her leave. The transition back has been tough. Getting up to speed in a professional setting has its own challenges, especially as a female in a male-dominated field, let alone the struggle of, with, with parting ways with her, her little guy. So anyway, we don't know what we're, what we're supposed to do here. We really hope that you, you take into consideration the, the valid points that I feel everybody's making here and, and don't cut the, you know, this vital piece of the system that we've come to depend on so, so heavily and so many others. And that's, that's basically where I leave it, so I, I hope that the vote works in our favor. And not just ours personally, but, but the, but the greater community because I think it is a bit of a benchmark for, for what we should strive towards as opposed to cutting it down and, you know, seeing how it goes. That's, that's it, but thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you, Brennan. The next delegation, delegate is Julie Bilado from Cambridge, welcome Julie, you have the floor, you have five minutes.
Thank you, is my camera working?
It is, you look great and we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So first, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you today. My name is Julie Bilado. My daughter Olivia attends Cambridge Children's Center in West Galt. I first want to start by acknowledging and thanking the highly skilled, educated and dedicated staff at each of the five regionally operated centers. Excuse me. In the peak of the pandemic's first wave, many of these educators put their health and their family's health at risk to care for the children of frontline workers. So that our doctors, nurses, first responders and personal support workers could continue to work so that our hospitals and long-term care centers could continue to operate. And as a community, as community members, I believe we all owe them a debt of gratitude for that, so thank you. Okay, that out of the way. Recently heard someone, actually a ward counselor, referred to the recommendation to close the doors of the five regionally operated centers, excuse me, operated centers as an assault on women. Does it sound dramatic? Sure. Is it wrong? Not even a little bit. At a time when all levels of government agree that women have been disproportionately affected by the pandemic through job and wage losses, that women are more likely to be in precarious or service-related employment that don't allow for the privilege of working from home. That due to the persistent wage gap, women are more likely than men to exit the workforce due to a lack of childcare. The idea of reducing any childcare services is unconscionable. There's no longer debate on this topic. We all agree that access to quality, reliable and affordable daycare is the cornerstone of an economic recovery. Yet the region of Waterloo is asking you to permanently close their doors during a pandemic at a time when women need, need more support than ever to re-enter or to remain in the workforce. The region's own strategic plan for twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-three includes providing excellent citizen-centered services that provide value for money and enhance service satisfaction. My daughter Olivia has been attending Cambridge Children's Center since July twenty nineteen, after well over a year on the waiting list. Since we've been there, there've been no unplanned closures, other than due to the pandemic, of course, and planned closures such as Christmas break or sad holidays are not charged to parents. I'm secure in the fact I can go to work and don't have to worry about unplanned closures for inclement weather, sickness, vacation or bereavement, leaving me without childcare, but still responsible for paying fees for a service I'm not receiving. That is value and it is unique to the regionally-run daycare centers. Another strategic plan for the region is to attract, support and retain skilled, engaged and diverse employees. The regionally-run daycares are the gold standard for expert care and this closure will only serve to dilute that level of quali- quality by laying off sixty-two full-time overwhelmingly female staff from one of the few employers in an overwhelmingly female-led industry who pay a living wage and in fact is used for salary benchmarking for other organizations in the industry. During our time with the Cambridge Children's Center, my daughters required occupational therapy and speech therapy. Thanks to her teacher's backgrounds in early childhood education and extensive knowledge in early childhood development, they were able to identify areas and behaviors she was struggling with. They quickly consulted with the resource coordinator and kids ability for assessments to match my daughter with the services she needed, which are typically provided in-house during daycare operating hours. This level of expertise and coordination with the regular curriculum, curriculum simply isn't matched in a home daycare private setting. To be clear, I'm not here to knock home or private daycare. I know for so many parents, it is absolutely the right choice for their family, but it should remain just that, a choice. Finally, the steering committee has made claims both in the media and to council that I find concerning. The first claimer implication is that if the centers were to close, we would see upwards of, of six point nine million dollars freed from the operating budget to reinvest. But we know two million of that comes from parent fees. Seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars of that in tax lev- $700,000 of that in tax levy dollars plus subsidies, none of which the region would receive if the centers were to close. This leaves only about $2.3 million available for reinvestment. That is a significant misrepresentation to the public of the cost to taxpayers and how far that money would go-
Julie, you have one minute left.
Sure. The second claim is that daycares are currently operating at 60% to 70% capacity and therefore parents shouldn't have any issue finding alternative care for their child. This is simply not true and I know this because I picked up the phone this week and called daycares in my area. They're operating at reduced capacity to comply with public health requirements during the pandemic that in no way translates to a 30% to 40% open vacancy rate. If we're deciding to forfeit our place as leaders in our community, our province, our country in an area that everyone agrees should see more government involvement, not less, by reducing parental choice and community resources, we are not listening or responding to community needs. If we're going to overlook all other metrics for what constitutes quality, reliable and affordable childcare in favor of lowered operating costs and increasingly limited oversight, then at best, all we're going to accomplish is making childcare available. And that simply shouldn't be good enough for any of us. In the second wave of the pandemic, at a time when we're seeing massive spending in all other areas, to say to families that the money just isn't there for them or their children is indeed an assault on women. Please vote no to closure.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
The next delegation is Keith Little of Kitchener. Keith, welcome. You have five minutes and you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Keith Little. I'm a parent of a child in Care Regional Center. I'm a teacher in the community of specializations in kindergarten and special education. I'm a past board member of Langs and a past president of the social planning of Cambridge and North Dumfries. I want to begin by noting for the record that we concerned community members and parents have had less than a week's notice of this meeting. We are parents of young families. We are, in my case, as holding down stressful jobs on the front lines of this pandemic, trying to hold our community together and giving less than a week's notice to prepare these delegations and to call this a meaningful public consultation seems a bit disingenuous. Just as an example, two of my questions I asked of Children Services for clarification to prepare for this delegation were received but went unanswered. There was simply not enough time. I want to speak first to the actual costs gained for the region with the closure of these five children's centers. KPMG's own report Steering Committee notes that by firing 62 FTEs during a pandemic, the region state will have to pay between $4.7 and $6.3 million in severance. Again, according to KPMG's own report to the Steering Committee, the centers have an annual operating budget, as you've heard, of $6.8 million. This means by closing the five regional childcare centers and eliminating these high-quality childcare spaces, the region stands to gain potentially as little as $500,000 after all is said and done for the next budget year. Now, it's clear from the report before you, Chair, and the budget measures being presented this month that related to COVID, we're trying to balance the books. I understand the pressure put on regional budgets as a result of COVID. Many families are impacted by these changes as well. But I ask you, Chair, is eliminating these high-quality childcare spaces for savings of as little as $500,000 in the next budget year actually worth it? I want to highlight too the amount of actual spaces gained by closing these centers. Again, according to KPMG's own report to the Steering Committee, the centers currently have enough space for 207 children, up to a capacity of 258 as some centers are operating below their full capacity. One of the suggestions from KPMG's own report is that by closing the centers, between 350 and 791 spaces could be created in the community if operators are willing. But they note that 791, in their words, is an unlikely number to create. I should note that the region has presented no plans to create these spaces, only at this point to close the 258 available spaces within the childcare centers and save the money. However, even if the region moves ahead to reinvest in childcare and by the conservative estimation from KPMG's report creates 350 spaces, the 258 potential spaces available in the current children's centers have to be placed within the community. Those children still need childcare. They need it now and they need it after COVID. 350 spaces minus 258 potential spaces in the children's centers, that's only 92 new spaces in the community. In other words, closing the region-run centers in 258 potential high-quality childcare spaces could potentially create as little as 92 new spaces in the community if operators are willing. I want to talk finally about the quality of these childcare spaces. KPMG in their report to Steering Committee clearly indicates that the closure of these children's centers would result in the loss of high-quality spaces. It's beyond a doubt right there in the report that these spaces are of the highest quality at the children's centers. The report itself indicates that parents may not be able to find spaces in their range of travel, close to home or close to work. The report also indicates that some children requiring special needs support may not be able to find spaces in the community at all. Closing these centers, losing these spots with absolutely no guarantee or plan of how to place new high-quality spaces in the community seems fundamentally reckless. I hope I'm being clear. The net savings for the region-
Keith, you've got one minute left.
Thank you. In the next budget is as measly as $500,000 after paying out severance for firing employees during a pandemic. The potential net gain of new childcare spaces in the region is as low as 92. 92 spaces of what quality? Today, there is no plan to reinvest that money in childcare in the region. There's no indication of how these high-quality spaces, which will be lost, will be replaced or if they'll be replaced at all or any other plan other than to close the children's centers and fire the staff. Today, the plan is to save as little as $500,000 in the next budget and create as few as 92 spaces with no indication of how or of the quality during a pandemic. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Keith. The next, we're going to take a break and about five more speakers, colleagues and delegates. Moya Fusen, Executive Director, CEO, High Scope Canada. Welcome, Moya. You have the floor and you have five minutes. You're on mute, Moya.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Please proceed.
I'm very happy to speak to you as I was very happy to speak to you five years ago and to think about the stress that people have undergone for five years. I have a really good plan for you to save a lot of money in the region of Waterloo since this seems to all be an issue of money. Research after research will show for every dollar invested in quality early education, you will save $17 in later social service costs. That's a lot of money to save. I wish when I got my statements from CIBC, it gave me $17 for every dollar I spent. I want to talk about the effect of quality. I want to talk about the effect of quality on children. Children in the early years, we're not talking about childcare. We're not talking about babysitting. We're talking about early education. What goes on in the early years has an effect for the rest of their life. And what we know about early education is good enough is not good enough. If you read any of the research, Canadian, American, worldwide research, it will show that children in childcare programs are under an enormous amount of stress. The only thing that alleviates the stress is quality. Excellence is the only way to go. Good enough is not good enough. Children who are in programs that are okay, that take care of their feeding and play with them and all of that stuff, it has a detrimental long-term effect on children. No, the regional Waterloo centers not only try to implement quality, they do what they say they are doing. They are accountable for what they're doing. They're assessed on a regular basis. They're trained on a regular basis. And you can say, well, community centers can do that. How many of your community centers, what percentage of their budget do they spend on training? Training is one of the greatest indicators of quality. Staff need to be trained and staff need to be held accountable. So what are we doing for our children? What are we doing for our families? It's not the family of Waterloo. It's not their fault there's COVID. They can't find the same quality spaces that they have in the region of Waterloo centers. There is no such thing as being too good. You will either pay today or you will pay later. You will make a difference today looking after the children. And all kinds of research has shown that. Interesting research came up recently that children in high-quality programs, high-scope programs, for example, not only do better later in life, but their children do better later in life. So there is an intergenerational effect of what is going on. But you need to be accountable. The region of Waterloo is accountable for what they do. Their staff is trained. They're assessed regularly. They have goals set for them. They have things that they are achieving with children. And they are implementing what they say that they are doing. So when you look at the community, ask yourself, what is it exactly you're supporting? How many of the centers you're supporting? How much of their budget do they spend on training? The highest indicator of quality in a program. And, you know, how do you know you're getting what you're getting? Thank you. And I want you to think that you'll pay today or you'll pay later. And your programs, your high-scope programs are high-quality programs. Your staff are trained. They're committed. They have supervisory support. And they are looking after not only families and children, but society later. What are you doing that is going to make a difference later on for society? Matters what you're doing in the early years. It truly matters that these children have the best that they can have. And that's what we want to have. And I've always respected Waterloo for thinking in that way. That idea that they'll create good things for today and for the future. So I hope you consider that and I hope you think about families, children and society. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, Moya. The next delegate is Samantha Estoesta from Kitchener. Samantha, you have the floor and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Chair Redman. My name is Samantha Estoesta. My partner, my two-year-old toddler and I live in Kitchener. I'm a working mother in technology. Before COVID, I entered a stage in my career where travel to Toronto was a more regular occurrence. We enrolled Morgan and the Only Daycare, a for-profit center in the entire region that has drop-off and pickup times that would still allow me to commute. This comes at an incredibly high cost. However, I, like many women in tech, aim to balance my career and the care of my child. When the COVID lockdowns hit, my partner and I rotated childcare work duties, alternating every two hours from 30 a.m. until bedtime. By May, it was clear that we needed a drastic change. Justin stopped working so that I could remain in the field. As a racialized woman in technology, this is incredibly rare. 30 years of work trying to achieve gender parity and racial representation in the workforce went down the drain. My toddler returned to her daycare in September. She uses two puffers due to her allergies and asthma. One reason why we chose this center was their standard of care. Thankfully, we are in an economic position where we can afford it and not every family can. Every child deserves quality, affordable, accessible childcare. Regional childcare centers are considered to be some of the best in the region and those subsidized spots often lead to the economic lift that brings class mobility for lower-income, often racialized families and families with children with accessibility needs. These centers are a part of the upstream services that literally pull families out of poverty, increase their health, decrease social isolation with those with accessibility needs and lower crime rates in their communities. 260 children and their families will now lose this core service and the holistic benefits it provides to them and their communities. This week, Peter Ringrose, on behalf of the Waterloo Crime Prevention Council, presented to you and outlined how when we address the root causes of crime, we also address the root causes driving many other social concerns. A dollar spent upstream saves $7 downstream. Specifically, the data shows us that children who experience quality care in government-run childcare centers are less likely to be involved in violent arrests by age 18, 9% versus 15% and significantly less likely to be chronic offenders by the age of 27, 7% versus 35%. It should be noted that many in our communities have also perceived this move to cut childcare spending as a means to help pay for the $8 million budget increase requested by the Waterloo Region Police Services. The region of Waterloo is projecting a close to $25 million gap between expenditures and revenues for 2021. Regional council directed staff to prepare a 2021 plan and associated budget that includes preparing for the preliminary 2021 tax-supported and user-rate operating budgets for the property tax and user rate increase of 0% inclusive of the police services, with options for a total property tax impact up to the rate of projected 2021 inflation. Therefore, to approve the $8 million budget increase that has requested by police services, everything is on the chopping block, including childcare services. This is a slap in the face to many who have tirelessly advocated for the reallocation of $29.3 million from the police budget to upstream services for the quality childcare. Comparing the budget impact of funding high-quality public childcare to WRPS 2020 budget of roughly $120 million, keeping these high-quality childcare spaces against 0.003% of the police budget. KMPG even acknowledges that this opportunity to save money does not support the region's 2019-2030 strategic plan where the region will develop and implement a new childcare and early learning service system planned with clear priorities and actions for improving inclusion, access, affordability and quality of licensed childcare across Waterloo region. Regional council is addressing inequalities in our community through additional investments to support BIPOC communities as well as a stronger focus on addressing the cost to action in the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, a key focus. Cutting funding to upstream services like these regional childcare centers is a betrayal. Using these services to cover the cost of WRPS budget is a betrayal. Words tonight include virtue signaling, lip service, not evidence-based.
Samantha, you have a minute.
One minute.
A minute.
Thank you. Yes, COVID has brought on unique financial strains. Our own chief medical officer has presented the data to you on how Black, Indigenous and racialized individuals, along with those with accessibility needs and those of low socioeconomic status, are at higher risk for COVID. If we want to protect our most vulnerable from the effects of COVID, not just the health, but social and economic offense, we need to prioritize upstream services like quality childcare instead of funding downstream services like policing if we truly care about our community's holistic well-being. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Next delegation is KJ Hutchins from Cambridge. KJ, you have the floor. Hang on a minute, sorry. Heather Fierlot from Cambridge. Heather, are you with us?
Hello.
You have five minutes and you have the floor. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you so much. My name's Heather. I'm a registered early childhood educator and a graduate of the Bachelor of Early Learning Program Development. Kinsman's Children's Center, which was one of the regional centers, was a very like cornerstone placement experience for me. It really impacted like my personal philosophy of teaching and my growth as an early learning and childcare professional. I'm basically reiterating what many others have said this evening, but the regional centers are definitely a benchmark for quality for the early learning and childcare system and they should not be closed ever, especially during a pandemic when it's not fair to families and it's not fair to the staff. There is going to be a very big ripple effect if this were to go through with the centers being closed where the families might not be able to find childcare as there's not spaces in other centers to host them. As well as the staff in these centers, like the 60 staff that are in the centers are going to have to find other places of employment in the field. As well as this is a decision that not too many people want. The Ontario Coalition for Childcare put out a petition and about 1,600 people have signed it saying that they're in disagreement with this change. So it's not a decision that our community members want or others in Ontario want as well. As someone who's working in the early learning and childcare system, like this isn't fair to families. It's not fair to children's. Every center in the Waterloo region should be at the same level as the regional centers. And to remove this benchmark for quality like in the region is unfair and unjust. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Heather. The next delegation before we take a break is Noel Fletcher, President, QP Local 1883. Noel? Welcome. You have the floor and five minutes.
Okay, so I'm Noel Fletcher. I am president of QP Local 1883 and we represent the childcare staff. So tonight I wanted to discuss the short- So tonight, I wanted to discuss the short-sighted decision to possibly close the five regional Waterloo childcare centers. I wanted to talk about the sixty-plus community members that will be without employment during a pandemic and the families and women who may struggle to find childcare in the future. However, a parent who could not be here this evening has asked me to tell her story. The story is relevant as it sums up the importance of these five childcare centers and the quality of care that staff provide. So here it goes. At nine months of age, my daughter was diagnosed with severe life-threatening food poisoning. Have an anaphylactic reaction immediately if she comes into contact with dairy, eggs, or peanuts. That means her throat will swell close immediately, blocking any airflow. Chloe, who also suffers from a rare form of these allergies, which can also cause a reaction resulting in a digestive system shutting down up to five hours after exposure. When choosing a childcare provider, we researched and interviewed numerous community childcare programs to find a quality center that could safely accommodate not only our child's development and emotional needs, but also her unique medical needs. It was difficult. We chose a region of Waterloo childcare center. It was the only program that we felt was willing and able to provide the support necessary to meet all our daughter's special needs. The childcare center dedicated countless hours of their time, meeting, reviewing, triple-checking, updating, and growing with our family to ensure that Chloe was safe while attending the center. Multi-layer processes and procedures were implemented. Messages and signage to other families informing them of our daughter's allergies to unique menus and product planning with the chefs multiple times a year, to accountability amongst staff, having to sign off on the food, leaving the kitchen, entering the classroom, and then check the third time prior to the food being served at the table. Seating arrangements, serving, and cleaning procedures are also followed by all staff. An individual safety plan is posted in the kitchen and classroom. Areas where all staff, permanent, contract, casual, and call-in are directed to read, understand, and sign for accountability. At the end of each day, a summary of all the food Chloe has been served, touched, or eaten is sent home so we can monitor her for the evening. The staff also attended an information session to learn about all the signs and medical steps associated with both times of anaphylactic reactions that Chloe could have. The Christopher Children's Center and all the regional centers set the community standards for the highest quality of early education and childcare by adopting Hyscope, a highly researched play-based curriculum. Staff are not only qualified ECEs, but certified Hyscope-trained. The staff maintain ongoing professional development as well as specific training in order to meet their daughter's needs. Most staff are long-term employees, which provides consistency and stability for both the children and families. Although all learning and childcare programs are licensed by the Ministry of Education, these are only minimum requirements and do not necessarily guarantee quality. As a parent who requires childcare in order to work, this high-quality care that is accessible and affordable is a necessity.
Noel, you have one minute left.
Thank you. The region's childcare programs are truly leaders in the community. This has been most evident during the COVID pandemic, with the region's programs taking the lead in providing safe and essential childcare services while other centers were unable to do so. I have recently had our second child. We are very hopeful that he does not inherit his sister's allergies, and I am not sure I will be able to return to work if he develops these allergies and I no longer have the option of childcare at the region of Waterloo centers. Please keep our childcares open. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Noel. We're going to take a five-minute break. So we will come back at twenty to nine to continue to hear delegations. Thank you to everyone who has already presented. We're about halfway through. Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. We are now going to reconvene. And the first delegation is Mary Dohannick from Almyra. Did I butcher that, Mary?
No, you did well.
Thank you. Please go ahead. You have five minutes and you have the floor.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. My name is Mary Dohannick, and my daughter currently attends the Almyra Children's Center. I've already sent most of you an email detailing how much the Almyra Children's Center, their philosophy, and their staff mean to my family. But now, I want to take this opportunity to point out how the consultation by KPMG conflicts with the region of Waterloo's strategic values. KPMG and the Steering Committee failed in working with integrity while still instilling trust in the following ways. Parents and caregivers of the region were not invited to be a part of the Steering Committee. In the parent and caregiver consultation, KPMG very clearly stated that the result would not end in a closure of the daycare centers. No communication occurred from the Steering Committee in the eight months between the consultation and the subsequent recommendation. The timing of the result of the review came only one week prior to this meeting tonight. This only gave parents a mere six to seven days to research, plan, and write an educated delegation speech, all while caring for young children. Next, KPMG and the Steering Committee failed to meet the strategic value of collaboration that involved and engaged others by their lack of community representation on the committee. Fifteen out of the sixteen members were regional councillors or region of Waterloo staff in high-paying, high-powered positions. The only member of the community is an executive dean at Conestoga College. This community representative is in conflict of interest as Conestoga College operates four daycare facilities, and they all could stand to financially benefit from the closures. Even if this one committee member did in fact represent the parents and caregivers of Waterloo region, they would have little to no impact on the rest of the fifteen region of Waterloo councillors and management staff. In order to achieve full collaboration, the Steering Committee should have been comprised of half of regional councillors and region of Waterloo staff and half of parents and caregivers of the Waterloo region. All of that aside, I think it is interesting to note that the region of Waterloo staff are recommending the elimination of more than full-time positions in a female-dominated workplace, while other male-dominated workplaces, such as the police force, are receiving a recommended five point five million dollars in salaries and benefits alone in just 2020. I request that regional council postpone this decision until the detailed and collaborative plan is in place to reinvest these dollars to create and maintain high-quality children spaces. I will end this delegation with just a couple of questions. Do you believe that this consultation met with the region of Waterloo's values? Without proper community representation, how does the Steering Committee plan to reinvest this money to create between three hundred and seven hundred and eighty high-quality daycare spaces? And lastly, are you defunding six point eight million dollars in children's centers in order to fill the twenty-five million-dollar COVID deficit? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mary. The next delegation is Carrie McQuaid, Early Childhood Policy Fellow, Atkinson Center. Welcome, Carrie. You have the floor and you have five minutes. You're on mute, Carrie. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I have a PowerPoint to share. May I do that?
Sure.
Okay. I think this is.
I'm looking around because sometimes it doesn't work, but it is for you, so please go ahead.
It is? It's up there?
It is up.
Okay. So it's a short slide presentation, but I'm not going to repeat the excellent and passionate arguments and facts that were presented by parents, because they certainly hold up and they certainly confirm what our review of public childcare in Ontario found. This is what the Atkinson Center does. It researches public policy and its impact on children and families. And of course, childcare is central to that. So I'm showing you this slide, and in it, it represents the comparison that we did between public, regional, public childcare in Ontario and other major childcare providers. And all of these childcare providers, we did not include in the study, you know, single-operated programs. These are all big operated programs with multiple sites. And I want you to look at this top, on this top line. This is public childcare. And the red and the gold bars, colored parts of the bars, that represents the wages and benefits, the percentage of childcare budgets that are spent on wages and benefits. And this, my friends, buys you quality. This buys you staff that are all trained in early childhood development. This buys you staff that are all trained in early childhood development. This buys you staff that are able to respond to vulnerable families, to very young children, to your diverse, to diverse populations. When we compare what is, how funding is spent in other parts of the, of the sector, we might expect that large multi-site agencies like we see here would be able to use their economies of scale to keep their administrative and other costs low in order to invest in their staff. This does not happen. The only place where we see this happening on a major scale is in public childcare. And here we see that less than 10% of spending goes into administrative and related costs. And that is the efficiency. That is the efficiency of public, of public care. I'd like to take on two other questions that were, that were raised. We did look at the, because as others have mentioned, KPMG went around the province in 2015 with this same message, divest. And some regions did. And the follow-up of it was, is that you lost care. Those regions that divested did lose infant, toddler, and special needs care. They did lose good jobs in the childcare sector. And when Ernst &amp; Young did a, did a review, just as KPMG did, of the role of public childcare, they found something quite different. They found that divestment was unlikely to produce the cost savings that KPMG-
Alana, you have one minute left.
Suggested it might. Firstly, I would like you to note that much of the empty spaces in childcare across the province are due to the fact that children who were on subsidies prior to the pandemic, only 50% of them have returned to care. And they haven't returned to care because their parents are most likely to work in precarious jobs. So, we are penalizing people who are unable to get back into the, into the workforce by denying their children care. So if we want to really deal with the vacancy issue, probably the place to start is looking at the requirement that in order for children to access early education and care, their parents have to be attached to the, to the workforce. This penalizes our vulnerable children the most. Finally, Canada is about to embark on major investments in early learning and childcare. It would be prudent to at least wait and see what the federal government is offering before making this kind of decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next delegation is Matthew Brenner from Kitchener. Matthew, you have the floor and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Yes. So my name is Matthew Brenner. I'm a father of a three-year-old who's attending daycare in the region. And I wanted to speak tonight against the proposed closures and speak to my personal experience. So for us, my, our daughter was on the one list for over a year before getting a space in a daycare. And from knowing other families in the region, it's very common, especially for infant care. And I've seen the impacts that this has on families' decisions for end career decisions and that the impacts particularly affect women. Looking at the, the proposed closures, from what, everything that I've heard, we're losing somewhere between 200 and 250 spaces for the possible gains of, as you said, 350 spaces. But to me, there, there's a big disconnect in that, A, the chances of us actually getting those spaces are small. The timing of when those spaces will be available, if they materialize, you know, won't be on anybody's timeline. And there's already clearly a problem if the wait lists are so high. The other points that I'm, I have trouble with is the phrasing that the money is going to be reallocated, which if it's going to be reallocated, then I don't see how there's a savings. And then on the flip side, if there is going to be a savings, that it's just on the backs of the, the hard-working ECEs. So essentially devaluing their work, devaluing the quality work that everybody has been speaking to tonight. So in closing, I just want to say that this is an important decision that speaks volumes to the values in our region. I know this year, Black and Indigenous leaders in our community have strongly stood up and asked us to defund the police. And from what I'm hearing, region is considering defunding childcare. And I'm incredibly disappointed by that decision, or possible decision. Again, I hope you make the right choice. I hope you keep these childcare centers open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Alana Powell, Executive Coordinator, Association of Early Childhood Educators. With apologies, Alana, I somehow skipped over you, so welcome. You have the floor and you have five minutes.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name's Alana Powell. I am a proud registered early childhood educator and the executive coordinator at the Association of Early Childhood Educators, where the professional association for ECEs in Ontario. And one of our key activities is to support ECEs in their professional practice and to advocate for professional pay and decent work. To say the least, we are disheartened to hear that once again the closure of Waterloo's regionally-operated childcare centers was on the table and that educators are facing job loss during a pandemic. We know these centers to be sites of exciting, innovative, high-quality early learning and childcare. And we know that these centers are also pillars of decent work and an important lighthouse for this profession. And for, and that Waterloo region is a leader across the province in this way. We recognize that childcare centers are places for children, but they also play a really important role in supporting families, particularly to reenter the workforce. They are also important to the economy by providing employment to the highly gendered and often racialized early childhood workforce. We have heard in the last, from many educators who speak about these municipally-run centers as places that were pivotal in their careers, either as placement students where they learnt and committed to the profession, or as places that they've worked. They felt supported, they felt recognized, and they felt respected. And this is important because this is something uncommon in our sector. Far too often, ECEs experience precarious work, low pay, and challenging working conditions. We know that this has a direct impact on the quality of care and education that young children receive. Municipally-operated childcare centers are places of hope for children, mothers, and workers in Waterloo region. They are essential services that have become even more visible and important during the COVID pandemic. These programs are a lighthouse to the sector. They demonstrate leadership as both providers of quality early learning and childcare and as employers. And at a time where precarious, low-paying jobs are on the rise, communities are struggling through a pandemic, educators are united in their calls for decent work and professional pay, and the federal government has made commitments to a national childcare plan. We must hold on tight to our places of decent work and hold them high as benchmarks of what is possible when we have publicly funded and operated childcare. So I'm urging you to be brave in making this decision and lead with your values. And consider how this time calls on you to ensure that you're investing in good jobs, in good care, and in good futures. This time calls for an expansion of publicly funded and managed childcare, not the loss of these important centers and jobs. Children, families, educators, and women in Waterloo region deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alana. The next delegate is Joseph Poplinsky from Kitchener. Joseph, you have the floor and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Joseph Poplinsky, and my daughter attends Edin Mackintosh and receives special needs support. I am nervous today as I never dedicated to you. I hope you hear me out and don't have made your minds up at all. It took a long time for me for a space to become available for my daughter. And we waited a long time to hear news from any centers that we applied, that they have a spot. Audrey has benefited in every way from the care that she receives at Edith's Mac. The approach to learning, developing problem-solving skills, social skills with peers, physical activities, and most of all, love and care her teacher shows her. I am concerned about this recommendation being brought for its charge you, close the centers. Here are my greatest concerns for this plan. First, there's no new spaces being created. I know there, there is a lot of capacity in the system now because of COVID, but I know that won't be the case forever. Once the pandemic is over, I'm sure that the parents will want their children back in their childcare. I do not think it is in the best interest of our community to permanent take away the center spaces as we respond to the time-limited problem of COVID. Second, the spaces being taken away are in neighborhoods where demand is high and no community providers are there. I live downtown K-Town and often bike or rock to Edith's Mac. And there is a desert of centers there, meaning there's not a lot of people centers there. Outside of quality, a major factor in our decision-making of childcare is based on the close to our home and work. I understand the region does not need directly provide childcare, but there's a lot of services that region does not have to provide, but does because it is the best public, best interest. Like the Ion, the airport, Waterloo Region housing, the museums, back lane, et cetera. Region should not close the center located in neighborhoods with very few options until a provider can create new space. Third, improving quality would be hard and maybe impossible to proceed. If the region of Waterloo wants to defund the centers to invest more resources, it is important to improve the quality, then develop the framework on how they are going to do it. Consult with the community, then close the centers, not the other way around. Fourth, my child has special needs and depends on help and care. I do not want to look for another placement for my beautiful daughter because all of her needs are being met. All her teachers and professionals in her life have goals, service plans, referrals, and planning for what supports she will need when she goes to school. If we have to find another childcare space for her, this relationship-building knowledge and trust to be all developed all over again, and that's even if we will find a center, we'll take her. My child is not guaranteed a spot in any childcare, and a community provider cannot offer a spot for any reason and do not have to be part, or to be accountable to the region or anyone else. I was never made to feel that Audrey wouldn't be fully welcome and included at Edith's Mac regardless of her special needs. I want you guys to do the best and do not close down the centers. If you do, a lot of things will happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Joseph. Well done. For your first time, you did great. David Hopkins from Kitchener, you're the next delegate. You have five minutes and you have the floor. Welcome.
Chair, welcome. Chair, ready to meet the councillors. I am also speaking to you this evening as a concerned parent about the possibility of the closure of these childcare centers. I have a three-year-old daughter who attends Edin Mackintosh, and we're also expecting a second. For time and need, and especially compared to previous placements, we've been continually impressed by the care that our daughters receive. The staff are amazingly supportive and caring. She's really happy there. She comes home every night talking about her friends, her great teachers, and all the activities she does. The teachers are really, really creative and enthusiastic and so is, you know, all sorts of different fun things she, she's talking about.
David, can you maybe try turning your video off? Your, your audio is just a little funky. We'll see if that helps.
So we, like, like many other parents do today, have had some significant challenges with previous placements. We had a home childcare placement where the care was-
David, you're cutting out again.
Okay. There, there is, sorry, my, my, she's streaming upstairs deep new.
Okay.
Okay, I know. Sorry about this. No.
That sounds better, David.
That, that sounds better. From that place of access. Was a pretty significant challenge for me this year. We, yeah, then, you know, finally we were able to access Carrie at Edith's Mac. And, you know, like, like many others have said, kind of everything changed and, you know, the stability and staffing and the skill and passion of the team has been huge for her wellbeing. So, rather than reducing the system quality by removing, you know, the region as one of the, as the operator that provides highest level of care, we need to raise the quality of care by other factors. Obviously, a key factor in this is funding, and it's certainly the region that we expect to take on our own as, as a system and as individuals and, you know, all the parents here, we need to advocate for other levels of care for that issue.
David, you're still breaking up. Can you possibly go out and come in again? We'll give you your five minutes when you come back in and hopefully your connection's better because it's very unintelligible. And I'm sure that you're making a lot of sense. We just can't hear you.
Okay, thank you.
So while David exits and comes back, the next delegate is Ally Burke. Welcome, Ally. You have five minutes and you have the floor.
Thanks so much. And thank you to all the council people and, and all of the parents and community members that have come out. I'm inspired. And, and I want to thank you, council members, for your focused attention to all of our concerns. I think it's really important and appreciated by all of us. I have two children that attended Christopher Children's Center, and they're actually no longer in care because they, they don't need it anymore. But I want to speak with you this evening as a parent of a child with a disability. My daughter, Olivia, was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes when she was three years old. She was attending Christopher Children's Center at that time. And if you are a parent, then you can understand when I say that my world was turned upside down when she was diagnosed. A few days after her diagnosis, when she was still admitted to hospital, because that's what happens when you're diagnosed with type 1 diabetes, I, I called Lisa Van Donck, who was the supervisor at that time of Christopher Children's Center. And I said, because I didn't know, I truly didn't know, can she still attend? And without skipping a beat, Lisa said, absolutely. She said, we will support you. We will support Olivia. We will ensure that she is safe and included. And for the next year and a half, she, she held true to that beyond. If you know anything about three-year-olds and if you know anything about diabetes, I am sure you can imagine that the management is a little chaotic at times. It is pretty constant. The entire staff were trained by the Diabetes Education Clinic, and, and they received some education from, from myself and my partner as well. So there was never going to be a day when Olivia couldn't attend because a staff wasn't there who was trained. Over the next year and a half, she was included. She had high-quality care, as so many parents have spoken about. She was safe, right? And I was able to continue to work. My partner was able to continue to work and contribute to our important local economy. And I, I can tell you, right, that, that knowing that your child is safe and included, that is, you know, you can't put a price on that, right? Nobody can. So I want to fast forward to two years later. So during that, that time in junior kindergarten, when I'm thinking, okay, it's summer's coming, I got to find care for my daughter, right? So I started doing some searching and I, and I emailed lots of places and I called and thought about what types of programs she might enjoy over the summer months. And I will tell you that although legally, all programs are required to provide service for children with disabilities, many of those inquiries went unanswered. And many people did connect back and say, ah, we're not really quite sure if we can provide that care. We're not sure if we're equipped. We're not sure if we're capable, right? So I understand, you know, that, that- So I understand, you know, that, that 1.9% uh, to the 10% budget, um, uh, uh, statistic there. And I understand that, that that's been assessed. That the cost of, of these regional centers is more than that of, uh, of, uh, private centers. But, um, what I, what I urge council members and, and those who are making this decision to understand that the cost is more because what's being offered is more, right? So these centers have the.
Ally, you have one minute left.
Great, yeah, yeah. So these centers have the capabilities to provide accessible and safe and inclusive care to, to our children. And I think everyone knows that children with disabilities are marginalized. And what I want you to understand is that closing these centers is increasing the size of those margins in the region of Waterloo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ally. Uh, is David Hopkins back with us?
I, yes, I, I am. Uh, I have left my video off and I'm wondering if you can hear me any better this time.
It's a big clear voice, David. Go for it. You've got five minutes and you have the floor. You can start at the beginning.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so hello, Chair Redmond and Counselors. I am also speaking to you this evening as a concerned parent about the possibility of closing the childcare centers. I have a three year old daughter who attends Edith McIntosh and we're also expecting a son in the next few weeks who is on their waitlist. Through our time at Edith, Edith Mac and especially compared to previous placements, we've been continually impressed by the care our daughter has received. The staff are amazingly supportive and caring and she's really happy. She comes home every night talking about her friends and her amazing teachers and all the activities that she does. Um, like, uh, other parents have identified tonight, um, we've also had challenges in previous placements. We had a, a home care placement where the, the care was, um, very suboptimal. And we were able to, uh, remove her from there by, um, moving her into a center in Cambridge. Because that's, that was, that's what was available at the time. There, there wasn't care available, uh, in Kitchener, um, when we needed it. We were able to get her into Edith Mac a few months later and it's been, uh, great ever since. Um, the, the quality of care is amazing and the, the staff are great. Rather than reducing the system quality by, um, by removing the best centers, we need to raise the quality of all the providers. Of course, a, a key factor in that is, is funding and largely this is not a regional responsibility. Um, we absolutely need more investment from the federal and provincial level of, levels of government. And, uh, all of the people here who are advocating with the region for the opening of, for the retention of these centers should also be advocating with those other levels of government for enhanced childcare funding. Uh, public investment in early years in childcare, uh, has a huge economic benefit. In Ontario, uh, every dollar invested in childcare returns, uh, about $2.27 in returns. Uh, affordable childcare helps boost a woman's workforce participation, um, which has a, a huge, uh, economic and social benefit, uh, to our country. Uh, much of the, uh, correspondence messaging around this has been related to equity. Uh, the feedback in the KPMG report, uh, discusses a reputation in the community that, that these centers don't serve a diverse population. Uh, specifically that they serve a higher, uh, that they serve higher income families. Um, I, I do have some concern with that reputation. Specifically, we haven't seen much in the way of, uh, actual, uh, data related to that. We've, we've, you know, heard, heard a bit about reputation, but not about actual numbers and, and what are the demographics of these centers and how do they uh, compare to our community? Uh, at least, uh, Edith Mac, um, is, isn't in a high income area. Um, and just, it's, there's, there's a lot of value in, in acquiring this information so that we can, um, you know, ma- make the most informed decisions. Uh, another important part of equity relates to, uh, sex and gender. Um, male dominated fields tend to receive more pay than female dominated fields. And these centerships, sorry, these centers show leadership, uh, in pay and working conditions, uh, in the early childhood education industry. By removing these centers, we may be, uh, causing further equity issues by removing the benchmark that, um, the other providers in the childcare sector compare against. Uh, by, and, uh, further depressing women's wages. Uh, a, another, uh, related issue is around the geography of care. Uh, both, uh, Elmyra Children's Center and Edith Mac, uh, are a large part of the, uh, childcare inventory in, in their areas. Removing those centers and, and deepening that need causes, uh, more equity issues. Uh, particularly for low income families who may not have the ability to, to travel away from downtown or away from, from Elmyra to access care. Um, and, and despite the significant needs in this area, there hasn't been much in the life improvement in care available in downtown Kitchener. There's three centers downtown, one of which is, is, uh, focused on Muslim children. Um, and this is while our downtown.
David, you have a minute left.
Sure. While, while our downtown core is exploding in population, we need to be an attractive community to, to live and work and we need childcare to do that. Um, the, the last, uh, point I'd like to mention is just, uh, concern about the, the plans that, that have been discussed. Uh, the current proposal is quite vague. It talks about removing the centers in favor of a number of goals, but those goals aren't, uh, detailed. There's not much information on timeframe or cost. Are there actually providers available who are prepared to add spaces? Are those spaces able to meet the needs of the children in our community? Are they located where they need to be? Uh, to make informed decisions on this, we should be comparing the complete plan against the current situation. Uh, thank you so much for listening to us on these issues and, uh, please keep these centers open. Thanks.
Thanks for dialing back in, David. That was a remarkable improvement and it was good that we could hear your, uh, points. So thank you very much for, uh, calling back in.
Thank you very much.
Jesse Van Dyke from Cambridge. Jesse, you're up next. You have five minutes and you have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak at tonight's meeting. We are the O'Connors and we now have our third child go through Cambridge Children's Center. We also have significant experience with other non-regionally run daycare establishments and with One List. Um, in fact, I think our youngest, who is almost three, is still technically on One List waiting for a daycare spot. The staff at Cambridge Children's Center care for our children as if they were their own and our kids love them as family members. When our oldest son went through the center, my husband was a young, single dad, barely making it, and these women gave them both a stable base. Our second son had significant language delays and his pediatrician was concerned that he may be on the autism spectrum. His teachers at the center played a huge part in helping him learn to communicate, interact socially and just make friends. They helped him see his own worth despite his quirkiness. And when he went to JK and had a really tough time adjusting, it was back to these women that I went for advice. These centers are staffed by well-trained, caring, knowledgeable caregivers who we depend on for guidance and helping our kids. They have carried many of us through incredibly difficult parenting times and stepped up in a big way when the pandemic hit to provide safe yet still enjoyable learning environments. Our kids move on to school and we know that they are ready for that next step. That is unfortunately not the norm in this region, despite the many assurances from counselors and the provided report. While our son was on the waitlist for Cambridge Children's Center, we had the misfortune of trying a few others. At one licensed facility, I had to find my eight month old baby cowering in a corner, covered in his own snot and feces for three days running. While being assured by a 20 year old who insisted I refer to her as Miss So-and-so, that they were giving him some space to adjust. He was there one week and was so traumatized, he wouldn't let me leave the room without him for months after. Is this really the best we can expect from our region? Closing down these centers will immediately put 90 well-educated staff, mostly women, out of the workforce. For many of us families, it will also mean one of us parents will have to quit their jobs because despite your assurances, we know that there are just not enough quality care spots in our area. So our choice will be to put our child somewhere we'd really rather not or lose our jobs. And the majority of those who give up their jobs to look after will be women once again. I'm a physician trying to remain sane in a pandemic. As a frontline worker, the only way I can go to work every day and care for others is to know that my child is safe and taken care of. If I lose my job, my patients will also lose their care provider. So it circles out wider and wider. We understand that the region is experiencing significant budget pressures for 2020, but divesting the directly operated children's center will not provide the level of funding needed to address these pressures and will further erode the system. The KPMG report is a little difficult to follow and feels intentionally misleading and appears to be written to justify a predetermined outcome. There does not appear to be any other plans considered such as finding cost-cutting methods within centers. We'd be happy to pack their own lunches for one and I would be happy to pay higher fees. But there are already responses from counselors to distraught parents stating that the $900,000 freed up tax levy funding will be redirected to other 2021 priorities such as public health, homelessness, transit, social services and paramedic services. So to our elected, elected officials, you are telling us that there is a shortfall and it has to be taken from children and young families. Are we also closing down all public transport and selling buses as they are not currently running at capacity due to the pandemic? Are we closing libraries and selling the buildings? Of course not. According to the latest statistics Canada reports, the average age in the Kitchener Waterloo Cambridge region is 39 and a half years and it is the fastest growing population in Canada with population growth of 2.8% in February 2020. Roughly a quarter of the population of the region is young women of childbearing age and 6% are children under four years, which is higher than that percentage in Toronto. Getting rid of high quality daycare spots in our region is the exact opposite way to go, especially since there is no clear plan to create these new spots. The report speaks of, and when the math evens out, there doesn't seem to be that many spots created. It boils down to the money and the fact that you want to spend it elsewhere and that you were doing it in the middle of a pandemic. Using pandemic math to justify the fact that centers are running under capacity. The region of Waterloo Strategic Directors for 2018, 2028 states the following. We engage by listening and responding to community needs. We inspire by conducting ourselves with openness to enhance public trust and confidence. I would implore you to listen to your community, to the people who are trusting you with your most precious commodity and to not rush this through behind the scenes as it feels it has been done. It does nothing to enhance, enhance our trust and confidence. Work with us to find a better solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Carolyn Ferguson from Kitchener, you're the next delegation and you have the floor. You have five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm joining you this evening to voice my concerns regarding the proposed closure of the five regionally operated childcare centers. My two-year-old child currently receives care at Edith McIntosh Children's Center. The region's five childcare centers are a gold standard in our communities for what exemplary childcare should look like. The region should be supporting and trying to replicate what they have achieved with these centers, not shutter them to redistribute funding. By closing the centers, the region is counting on private centers to take on these displaced children as well as new children without any clear plan of how this will actually work. The closure of the centers is being portrayed by the region as action to support affordability, equity, sustainability, access and quality across the entire childcare system. However, the KPMG report clearly highlights serious concerns that would result in negative impact on childcare across the region. KPMG gives a range of between 350 and 791 licensed spaces in community programs being created as a result of regional center closures. Subtracting the over 200 childcare spots that will be eliminated through the regional center closures, this action may result in only creating a handful of new childcare spots. KPMG notes that divestiture will result in the loss of high-quality spaces and that closing all centers will reduce quality for 5% of licensed spaces in the region with the loss of salaries, the high scope program, professional training and development opportunities, freshly prepared meals and significant improvement to rooms and equipment. The KPMG report also notes that the funding created from closing the regional centers will only cover a portion of the costs for new spaces at private centers and that the majority of funding for community operated spaces comes from parent fees. In order to create new childcare spots, community providers will need to secure more physical space and hire and train more staff. The redistributed funding from the region will only result in a modest amount going to each individual community operator annually. So there's a high possibility that the newly created spots could be more expensive. Not to mention the fact that there is no guarantee post-COVID, when childcare needs increase again, that other childcare providers will want to increase their intake numbers. The KPMG report specifically highlights the fact that by closing the regional centers, some children requiring special needs supports may not find spaces in the community, according to interviews with former operators. Currently, there are at least 45 children with special needs at the children's centers. KPMG also highlights that parents may not be able to find licensed childcare spaces in geographies with shortages. I live downtown Kitchener, which is an area known to have a shortage of childcare in the immediate vicinity. Ge- geographic location and the ability to take public transit to and from centers is key to equity and access. It's also unlikely that more daycare operators will choose to open facilities in the downtown core due to high rent. The region also needs to address the fact that center closures means laying off 62 regional staff members, many of whom have worked at the centers for over a decade or more and most of whom are female. These staff members were called upon by the region to provide care to the children of essential frontline workers in early 2020 and answered by providing exceptional care. Again, the KPMG report highlights that other operators will not be able to afford the region's compensation levels and that the layoff of these regionally employed ECEs will decrease the ECE wage benchmark. We are talking about the professionals responsible for caring for the most precious.
Carolyn, you have one minute left.
Thank you. Caring for the most precious, most vulnerable members of our community is minimizing and undercompensating ECE's work a sign of success for the region. As a working professional and a mother, I am telling you that when you remove my trusted childcare, I will not be able to continue to work. The high standard of childcare the regional centers provide is not a privilege. It is a right that every parent in our community should expect. This quality comes at a cost, but it is an investment in the development and wellness of children in this region. Please listen to the voices of those who actually access the services the regional centers provide every day and consider the legacy that this council would like to leave. Do not jeopardize childcare in this region in the favor of cost-cutting and redistributing funding to other areas in the region's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, the next delegate is Phil Deacon from Elmyra. Welcome, Phil. You have the floor and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, first, I'm so impressed and thankful to all the delegates tonight. Uh, it's been truly inspiring to hear from everyone tonight. Uh, my name's Phil Deacon and I'm here on behalf, behalf of myself and my wife Samantha Meyer. We have submitted, uh, a written document as well and thank you for the consideration of that submission as well as the opportunity to speak tonight. Our three-year-old daughter and nearly two-year-old attend the Elmyra Children's Center. Certainly agree with everyone here that the programming, facilities, teachers and staff are, are state of the art and second to none. I'm also a family and emergency physician and my wife is a professor of public health at the University of Waterloo. So although we've been busy during the pandemic and are eternally grateful for our center, uh, which we do consider part of our family, I would like to speak a bit more broadly about the importance of your decision, uh, the decisions that's in your hands and its impact on our wider community at large for years to come. Equity. We've heard the committee raise term equity, but I'd like to note that we should be actually focusing on equitable access to excellence in early childhood education. And then we've heard about cost savings. We've heard about hundreds of thousands or even millions of dollars in cost savings to help balance the budget due to the cost of the pandemic spending. Well, you can't have both. You can't cut the funding from early childhood education in our community and then spread the remaining reduced amounts to subsidies and other programs and call out equity. It may be equal, but the math doesn't add up to improving access to the excellent kind of care and education that happens in these childcare centers. Increased privatized, privatization of these essential services, as is being proposed, will only deepen the divide between the haves and the have-nots in our region. The cost savings will either mean reductions in quality or have to be made up by out-of-pocket payments by families, which inevitably means that those with lower socioeconomic status will be further disadvantaged in access to the excellent level of care that is currently available in our region's facilities. If your stated goal is equitable access to excellent early childhood education as it should be, then we hope that the council will not accept the recommendation before them. The fact is that excellent, up-to-date and integrated early childhood education and curriculum requires funding. Our staff, our current, our staffs are, are, centers are staffed by professionals who maintain professional development standards, update and communicate curriculum based on current best practices. They are trained to identify and intervene early when medical, developmental, speech, language or behavioral or other issues arise in our children and have built-in linkages to allied health, medical, educational supports to provide them with additional interventions needed these kids right there in their own learning environments. Their built-in nutritional programs are evidence-based and provide essential fuel for building healthy minds and physical development. Retaining, training and supporting excellent early childhood educators and staff does cost money, but it is worth it in the long run as they set the foundation for future academic achievements. The evidence is clear that forward-thinking regions around the world have identified the benefits of early intervention, excellent universal access to early childhood education in terms of outcomes, including physical health, mental health, academic performance moving into the school as well as socioeconomic class opportunities for upward mobility throughout the life course. In addition, well-supported early childhood education systems have been shown to support women in the workforce, permitting career growth and financial independence as well as leadership within business and organizations. The KPMG report and consultation, despite the valid concerns raised tonight and about its timing and transparency, is actually very clear in demonstrating the excellent care and education being provided in our regional centers. Based on their measurements and interviews with parents and families and the current programming within these centers, one of their own recommendations is actually to expand the current programming to the wider population. The option to close the centers is actually only one subsection of one of the five recommended potential outcomes of their 113-page report. Other options included, but are not limited to, uh, expanding and. Expanding and reviewing enrollment criteria to focus on underserved populations, including BIPOC. Reviewing cost efficiencies within the current structure, stratifying cost fee structures to increase proportions paid by higher-income families. In short, we have options. We encourage council to not accept the presented recommendation by the committee, but to take time to review the actual options and opportunities here. To take a leadership role in prioritizing and actually expanding the great work that's already being done.
Phil, you have one minute left.
Especially, especially federal counterparts and local educational systemic partners to find creative solutions. With the goal of expanding the great work that's already going on in our centers. The bottom line is that excellent early childhood education does cost money, but the long-term outcomes for our children and families and community at large for years to come. Of expanding this type of programming rather than taking two hundred steps backward, as is being proposed. Represents an opportunity for council to recognize the importance of this issue to your voting constituents. Who are here tonight and at home waiting for your decision on December second. We urge you to prioritize continuing to grow our region as a center of excellence in early childhood development and education. And focus on actually expanding the great work that's being done in our region's centers, not closing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. The next delegate is Janet Davis from Toronto. Janet, you have the floor and you have five minutes. Welcome.
Hello, I'm very pleased to be here this evening and I want to thank you for taking the time. To hear all of the deputants on this important report and for staying so late and hearing five minutes of deputations for everyone. I do know what this is like. My name is Janet Davis. I live in Toronto, but I'm a former Toronto City councillor and I retired just before the twenty-eight. Or at the twenty eighteen election. But during my fifteen years on council, I was Chair of the Community Development Committee. I. We had a children's advisory committee I chaired and I had a number of roles. That led me to be very active on the childcare issue as an elected councillor. Before that, I was a childcare policy advisor in the Early Childhood Department of the. Board for twenty years and I did a stint as a policy advisor for the Minister of Education. So I've devoted my full career to advancing high-quality childcare for families in Ontario. But why am I here in Waterloo tonight? Well, Waterloo region has a special place for me. It's where I started my career. I received my early childhood education diploma at Conestoga College. I did an ECE placement at Christopher Centre in Cambridge. I grew up in Cambridge. My mother still lives there. My sister lives in Kitchener. My father was a Reeve in North Dumfries in nineteen fifty-something. So Cambridge is my hometown and I care very much about what happens to the regional childcare system in Waterloo. You have been leaders, leaders in developing and delivering high-quality early childhood education for decades. And I'm here to urge you not to accept the recommendation to close your regional centers. I'm familiar with service reviews. We had a core service review in Toronto. Leading up to our twenty thirteen budget, KPMG did it, so I'm very familiar with their methodology. We had deputations over and over again overnight, in fact. And I know you're looking at ways to save money. And KPMG takes you through a process that seems to be objective and fact-based and. It leads you through a number of options. But it does not replace values, compassion or the constituents that you're elected to represent. And I'm here to say, don't vote to close the centers. You'll be displacing children and families, laying off staff, losing childcare capacity probably permanently, two hundred and six spaces. And you will not be able to serve the hard-to-serve families and special needs families, that children that you specialize in serving, as do all. The directly operated municipal centers like we do in Toronto. I want to say though, KPMG, as the previous speaker said, did not recommend closing five centers. They laid out a series of options. And not only did they point out the up to six point four million dollars severance costs of closing them, they. All of the reasons that are the benefits of directly delivering. Services in the public sector and I won't go through them. They're laid out very clearly in the report. But closing these centers will mean losing the capacity of two hundred and six spaces probably forever. Because no other operator will be able to operate them unless they're paid exactly the same rates. And are paying the same salaries and benefits that are contained in the collective agreement. So there will be no savings and probably no other operators. Closing the centers right at the time the federal and provincial.
Janet, you have another minute.
Have made a commitment to significant funding for childcare. Under the safe restart agreements, the nineteen billion dollars, you will be receiving more funding. And they are in the process of negotiating a new federal provincial. Early learning and childcare framework agreement and we will be getting more money. Significant amount of money. The Ontario budget just last week announced that they're committed to expanding thirty thousand spaces. And I urge you to not look at achieving your growth and equity targets by reallocating, taking from Peter to. Stealing from Peter to give to Paul. Is that the expression? No, what we should be doing, all of us, is advocating for the kind of funding we need to deliver high-quality services for more families through growth, not reallocation. So I think it's on the eve of getting such significant funding, it is premature and imprudent to vote to close the centers. Now, I read a table that said the savings for the twenty-one budget is only a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and I know it comes from Toronto in billions of dollar budget. But if that can be deferred, defer this report, defer it. And wait to see what happens with the federal and provincial money. It's coming very soon. And please do not disrupt the lives of two hundred and six children. The most important thing about quality early childhood education is the relationships they have with staff. And families depend on it. You heard all the parents tonight. It is heartbreaking to think that the relationships they have with their staff are about to end. So please defer it, vote against it, but don't support it. And join all the other municipalities across Ontario to demand the kind of funding we need to grow the system that women. Families and children need in Ontario and across the country.
Thank you, Janet. The next delegation is Susie Taka from Waterloo. Welcome, Susie. You have five minutes and you have the floor.
Great. Thank you so much to everyone for letting us all speak today. It's a long night. I'm tired because I'm sure a lot of the other parents here are. Today, after waiting from the time I was four months pregnant. My seventeen-year-olds, our seventeen, seventeen-month-old started at a nonprofit childcare center in our region. So this is a big day for me. Like many parents, my wife and I have been cobbling together solutions due to family health reasons and more to keep them home as long as possible during the pandemic. And as a queer mother, I was not going to settle for anything but an open, armed, inclusive care environment. I was only able to find that in nonprofit and regional centers. I did not get a spot at a regional center. I am told I am still very far behind on a waitlist I've been on since essentially conception. When I dropped my child off for the first time today, I saw a rainbow flag at the front desk. And I knew that my family belonged. I say this to let you know that it is not just about vacancies or number of spaces for parents. It is about equity. Defunding quality care is not about equity. A redistribution of the five hundred and forty-four thousand dollars it costs to run these childcare centers is not equity. It is equality. And I thought the region was moving beyond that. It is saying, let's spread the money around equally and very much missing the point. Of what you Chair Redman spoke about, of how tens of thousands of us marched in our community in June. We were, people were asking for a more equitable region and no one was asking for that on the backs of children. The statistic of one point nine percent of the budget supporting. Or ten percent of the budget supporting one point nine percent of kids is being used a lot. And it's good. It's a good communication strategy because it has an impact. You know, I think, I think that was good comms work, but I would say we are living in a time of what I hope is great social change. Of what could and should be a great reimagining of how we operate. So I say to you, the council of an incredibly vibrant and innovative region. What if the solution to the statistic isn't to defund five childcare centers to shrink that ten percent? But to add more funding to childcare in the region to make more of a good thing. We have the opportunity to no longer do business as usual and what if we were the ones to step up and say families and children. All the children we've heard about, children with disabilities, BIPOC children, working mothers, don't deserve more equality but more equity. By adding more funding to a model that clearly works. We could compare this, say, to the WRPS police budget, which is one hundred and eighty million dollars. So these childcare spaces represent just zero point zero zero three percent of that police budget. I, I think our children deserve that and I think we can do better. Many of you may know that in twenty nineteen, as well as many other years, Waterloo region has been ranked one of the least safe places to be a woman and to be a queer person. The removal of two hundred and sixty childcare spots from the systems means worse economic security for all ECEs. And it, and it means less safe spaces for queer families in this region. We do not have standards in place in private care and at-home care that we know will be accepting, but we know that these nonprofit centers, like the one I was lucky enough to finally get a spot in. Or the region's centers are more welcoming of diverse families. I also want to mention that the KPMG report is, is very bureaucratic. This is the same firm. That authored Jason Kenny's notorious report on Alberta's finances that recommended private health clinics. So.
Susie, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. I don't think we can look at KPMG as an impartial body when they're sort of known for austerity cuts. And I thought we, you know, we're trying to be a more progressive, more just region. I've. I've had the fortune of attending many council meetings this year and what's sort of been a impactful political year in the region and, and I thought we were working to do better. So I'm just here to say, I, I beg of you as a parent who has languished on waitlists. Who knows other parents who are stressed already in this pandemic, who are making tough choices to send their kids to care in. These horrifically extreme circumstances, putting our lives at risk to send their kids to care to not get rid of these quality care spaces. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Susie. The next delegate is Julia Holland from Cambridge. Welcome, Julia. You have the floor and you have five minutes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Julia Holland. I live in Cambridge and my son goes to Christopher Children's Center and my. Daughter is on the waitlist to begin there. I was hoping for her to begin back in a, in a year when I can go back to work after one year of maternity. But it's looking like I won't be able to have a space for her because of the. Changes due to COVID. There's no longer an infant room available there. I've called around to the other YMCA's in my area. One of them doesn't ever offer infant rooms. And the one that does assures me that there will not be a space until September. So I'm looking at being off work for eighteen months instead of my intended one year. I had a whole list of things to speak to this evening, but much of it has been covered. So I would just like to. Kind of flush out a few different areas that were brought up with some other ideas. I'm going to start by quoting something that I found on the regional Waterloo website. So on that website. It says that Harvard University researchers say that in the first few years of life, more than one million neural connections are formed per second. These connections build the foundation on which all later learning, behavior and health depend. When I go for walks around my beautiful downtown Cambridge, I live in Gault. And I look at the faces of these people standing on the street corners who are suffering with mental health and addictions. I can't help but wonder, where would they be if they had access to high-quality daycare, childcare when they were young? I am an educator in the, in the region and I have been so for ten years. And I know that not all families have access to the same. Just resources that, that they should. And I can see that play out with the students in my classroom. I can see the students that come to school that have had that stability. And that level of care that allows them to be able to be good problem solvers. That allows them to be able to focus in class and learn. And then I also see other students who have not had access to that because their families are struggling. And then they struggle too. And unfortunately, they end up sometimes being those people that continue to struggle with mental health. In adulthood. And then we're paying for that as, as a region. When I think we could spend the money when they're young to make a difference at that point. The other thing I wanted to speak to that no one brought up yet, I don't think, but in the report presented by KPMG. Said that the wages of the staff within the regional-run daycares are an issue. They specifically stated, industry-wide shortage of qualified ECEs resulting in recruiting and retention challenges. For childcare operators. The children's centers' compensation level adds additional challenge to attracting talent. The fact of the matter is that the ECEs and childcare providers and other daycares are being underpaid. The average wage of most daycare professionals in our region is between eighteen and twenty dollars per hour, which works out to about three thousand dollars a month growth. When you consider the fact that houses in Cambridge on average cost over six hundred thousand dollars. And in KW over six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and that's according to RE/MAX in October of this year. These are ECEs are not being paid.
One minute left.
These are ECEs are not being paid a livable wage. The issue here is not that the staff in our regional-run daycares are being paid too much. It is that the staff in the other licensed daycares are being paid too little. There's lots more that I had intended to say. But I think I'll, I'll just leave it with, I believe that we live in the best country in the world and that was evidenced. This year during the pandemic when we saw how we handled COVID versus our neighbors to the south. And the way we did that was not by throwing in the towel. It was by spending money where we had to spend money and doing the right thing. And I think that we as a region need to follow suit. In this case, it's spending money on our children. That they're our future and they deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julia. The next delegation is Bonnie Cobb, grievance chair, QP eighteen eighty-three. Welcome, Bonnie. You have the floor and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Chair Redman. Good evening. I am so humbled by what everybody has said ahead of me. That I don't even know if I could add to make a significant difference, but I'm going to try. I'm Bonnie Cobb, the grievance chair of QP Local eighteen eighty-three. Tonight, many of us have chosen to speak to council to make a plea to save the regional-owned childcare centers. I completely understand the financial crisis that many businesses, municipalities and families are facing. Which brings me to my point and the reason why I need to speak to council this evening. Many of you may not realize how exceptional the regionally-owned childcare centers are. And that they are, and that they have been leaders in providing specialized childcare to children of a wide range of needs, no matter how challenging. I want to tell you a story of my experience with the childcare centers. As a young student, I was uncertain as to what career direction I would take. I had the privilege of observing the Christopher Childcare Center located in Cambridge as a young student. And you can tell by the color of my hair, I am no longer a young student. We're talking over thirty years ago. I witnessed happy children as well as diligent staff. I was impressed with the level of professionalism and care provided to the children. One young girl who spent her days in a scooter due to her disability made an impact on me that day. She was very curious as to why I was there. And I explained to her that I was there to make a career choice. I wasn't certain as to what I wanted to do. She quickly told me that I could be anything I wanted to be. That the world was my oyster. Sorry, my computer just froze on my, on my Word document. Doesn't it figure? This young child's words still ring true to me. She told me you can grow up to be, do anything and do what you want. The early childhood educators working in this particular. The early childhood educators working in this particular classroom agreed with her, and a conversation began with all the children about what they wanted to be and how they could achieve this. The early childhood educators promoted this conversation and encouraged the children to be anything they want. Why I bring this story to your attention is earlier this year, when COVID eight nineteen closed all childcare centers, it left many families in a desperate situation, scrambling to continue to work and to have their children cared for. When childcare became critical for essential workers, only regional daycare centers opened in this municipality. The province used the region of Waterloo's childcare model and plan as a template for how to open childcare centers across the province of Ontario. During the pandemic, in a safe but educational way. It was the region-owned facilities that provided exceptional daycare to essential workers in this community during the pandemic. This speaks to the level of professionalism and care that our regionally-owned daycare centers provide. What does the region value? I would hope that it is the children and families that reside in the region of Waterloo. These children are our future. This is where the region should be investing in the development of all of our young children. I challenge all of you here to think of the children, the families, the level of quality care, and this type of care is what other childcare centers strive for. Where are these children with special needs to go?
Bonnie, you've got
How does the region plan on supporting the parents of special needs children? This is not innovative thinking at all. Why would we take a giant step backwards in childcare? The region wants a thriving community and therefore keeping our regionally-owned childcare centers would be a giant step forward in continually being leaders in childcare and promoting a thriving community. I want to thank you for continually supporting our children, our families, and our regionally-owned daycare centers. Counselors, please accept the challenge. Do the right thing. Save the centers. Hear the parents. Support the children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bonnie. Uh, the next delegation is, uh, Peter Quinney of Kitchener. Welcome, Peter. Uh, you have the floor and you have five minutes.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for the passion of the preceding delegates. Uh, I share in the frustration of my fellow parents to learn that this drastic recommendation has been selected during these trying times. Although we have been assured the review was initiated for reasons beyond the pandemic, it consistently prefaces the rationale for this recommendation. The parties most affected by these closures have been consulted last and with little warning or preparation time. I believe this has engendered a feeling of skepticism, mistrust, and doubts surrounding the underlying motivations and delivery of this recommendation and for why total closure was chosen from the other four options presented. The steering committee has told us that the cost to these centers would be better allocated elsewhere. But the KPMG review does not indicate an across-the-board closure as the clear solution. Like any tax, I do agree that there is a need to address budget shortfalls and commensurate adjustments to services and fees. I am troubled that after identifying a financial shortfall five years ago, that inadequate changes were made. Parent using these centers over the last five years, there have been little discernible changes that would address these issues. And I challenge you to fully explore the other options before we use one-fifth of a third party's recommendations as a shield for reputational damage and completely forfeit our role as provincial childcare leaders. We haven't done enough. We can do more, and closure is not the answer here. You have been, you have repeatedly heard from parents who have struggled to find a spot. Yet you are being told there is a surplus of spots as a rationale for closure. I believe you are being misled. The data shared on slide number twenty-four of the report indicates that the waitlist in Kitchener is disproportionately higher than the other areas. And a coherent explanation as to why a complete closure to all centers would improve the childcare desert in Kitchener Center. That argument has not been made. There are other ways to address this, and I would urge council to meaningfully investigate them to save our centers rather than simply remove it and hope that private sector daycares will swoop in to make a prompt and substantial venture during what Barb has eloquently told us is so difficult in these circumstances. As previously mentioned tonight, the rudimentary math of potential childcare spaces created our hypothetical and rely heavily on new childcare providers emerging. Not to mention, there is no concept of quality included in this allotment. Creating funding for spaces does not necessarily create spaces. The KPMG report and the steering committee claim that reallocating these funds can create additional childcare in the region. They can create new subsidies, of which there is no waitlist, reduce costs, and they can bolster the region's ability to support parents in securing childcare. The region's efforts to do this seldom get parents a spot for their child. The one list is ineffective. It takes years of being on it for it to not work. So it cannot be the answer moving forward. The repeated efforts to close these centers and the inadequacy of current programs to meet the growing demands of childcare in this region has eroded our confidence in such support being successful. And I would strenuously caution the counselors in accepting an argument to the contrary. We need your leadership right now to show strength in the face of this pandemic. It is said that a rising tide raises all ships. I challenge all counselors to reflect on how the high standards set by these centers will impact the quality of childcare in this region. Our centers deliver developmentally appropriate curriculum. They meet special needs of all learners. And they welcome the diverse needs of our community. If we were to remove it, it would only serve to diminish the quality of care available. You have heard from many parents tonight with children of all needs. Can you confidently say that this closure will prove to support more diverse inequity? It has been made clear to the parents that the region is under no obligation to provide care as if it were a rationale for its removal. I feel a great swell of pride and a high-quality service and fear that this shortsighted decision to destroy a pillar of this community, we are all so invested in. These centers place a spotlight on the leadership in our province as they represent our core community values. I want to live somewhere that does what is right and not what is easy. And I challenge the counselors to vote for raising the standard of care instead of adding to the vacuum of childcare in our region for private ventures to only meet the minimum standard. We understand the cost is high, but so is the weight of leadership. This is a critical moment in the direction we take and a significant opportunity to not only create equitable access to high-quality care for our greatest natural resource, but to strengthen our region as a whole. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for representing these delegates in your vote.
Thank you, Peter. The next set of delegates, um, will get three minutes each because they registered, um, after the cutoff time. So the next delegate is Matthew Pelton from Cambridge, and Matthew, you have three minutes. Welcome. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts on these proposed closures. I'm the father of two wonderful young girls, and both my children have had the good fortune of attending Cambridge Children's Center since my wife and I moved our young family here four years ago. However, throughout their young lives, our family previously experienced childcare at three additional centers not run by the region. Those included two private facilities and one not-for-profit. And I'm here to say that the, 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 the care that our children have received at Cambridge Children's Center is unequivocally the best care my daughters have received by a long shot. And I would even go so far as to say that one of those private, private care facilities that we previously experienced was so terribly run that I don't believe that it should even have a license to operate today. Yesterday, my wife and I received, uh, a letter from Barb Cardow, which outlined key priorities in the region's childcare program. And among those priorities, two items stood out for me. First, improving the affordability of childcare through widespread fee reductions or subsidies. And while I do think that every parent would like to see lower fees, I don't think parents would choose lower fees if it meant lesser care. And that leads directly to the second point that stood out for me, which was increasing the quality of childcare programs in Waterloo region. I've read the reports about existing system capacity. However, we've heard several times this evening, those figures, uh, have been challenged. But what I cannot be convinced of, regardless of existing capacity or not, is that, that there is a better care avail, is that there is better care available to my youngest daughter uh, than what she is now receiving at CCC. Shuttering these centers does not improve the net quality of care for Waterloo region's children. In fact, based on my experience, I believe that it would do quite the opposite. KPMG even supports that notion in the report, noting that parents believe these centers, quote, "have a positive impact to their child's physical, cognitive, emotional, and social development," end quote. Lastly, I wanted to address the staff specifically. The KPMG report indicates the competing centers can't keep up with regional wage, wages. And salaries and benefits make up the largest portion of expenses. These closures wouldn't just affect
Matthew, you have one minute left.
Thank you. But of these wonderful care providers. Out of interest, I went online last night, uh, and searched for an ECE job here in the region. And the average starting pay was around fifteen to twenty bucks. So I ask you, counsel, which model is broken? The one that barely pays individuals who have a post-secondary education a living wage? Or the one you've created here where these people receive benefits, training, and advancement opportunities? Counselors, good jobs are not a problem. The staff at Cambridge Children's Center have been a part of our family that have been, that have cared so much for my two girls over the past three years. Good jobs attract top talent and provides a stable work, stable work environment that enables those staff to bring their best selves to work every day, to look after our children, to help them learn and explore and grow. Counselors, I don't have the answers, but I promise you closing some of the best childcare facilities in the regions, in the region does not improve care for our region's kids. This is not a system that needs to be dismantled and shuttered. This is a program to which every other childcare option in the region should be aspiring to. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. The next, uh, delegation is Alex Oda from Cambridge. Alex. Welcome. Um, you have three minutes and you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a three-year-old currently attending Christopher Children's Center and a one-year-old that I'd very much like to attend Christopher Children's Center. I understand that this is a very difficult decision to make, but I believe strongly the center should remain open, and I request you to vote against this proposal. There are a few issues that I'd like to discuss. The first is accessibility. We had trouble finding a spot prior to the pandemic. We're having trouble finding adequate daycare now for my one-year-old and for my three-year-olds should the, these centers close. Because of the pandemic, we can't rely on parents and friends the same way we could before. I can't simply drop off my daughter to my parents' place or vice versa. I'm very concerned that the closure of these schools will result in delays to our children getting adequate, adequate care. And I'm not confident a suitable plan will be in place over the next few months to support those that require it. This leads me into my second issue, which is cost. If we can't find adequate daycare, this will likely result in my wife having to take additional time to support our children, given our current economic situation. This means her career once again is put on the back burner. This is not fair to her. It's not fair to the other women that go through this, and it's not fair to my daughters. Moreover, it'll likely result in us seeking more municipal, provincial, and federal support. The third issue is quality. My daughter has grown significantly because of the quality provided by the center and through the high school preschool curriculum. She is much more confident, independent, and can communicate effectively, which makes things much easier for me. Because of this school, I am confident in sending her to kindergarten and believe that she is set up for success, which will cause a snowball effect as she progresses through her education and her other endeavors. We know this through research that's been done. And furthermore, should we look to private sectors? You are unable to guarantee me the same level of quality through those ones as you are through the, through the others. The final issue that I'd like to discuss is the COVID. I'm very curious to why we decided to close these centers now or in the near future. We don't know where this pandemic is going. We don't know where it's, could end up. We didn't know, we never thought we'd have a And sometimes in some other regions are looking to lock down again. We need as many locations open as possible to support all these different locations so the economy can continue, continue to sustain itself. Closing these schools won't, is the wrong decision. It seems extremely reckless and irresponsible. In conclusion, I firmly believe the center should remain open indefinitely. Should you still find it absolutely necessary to close down these centers? You need to do it in a way that will protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, the next delegate is, uh, Brandon Kelly from Kitchener. Brandon, welcome. You have the floor and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair Redman and council. I will try to keep this brief as we will be submitting a written statement to each of you and, and that I hope you will also consider. My child has the privilege of attending the Cambridge, Cambridge Children's Center, and our other child is on the waitlist as it is one of the two children's centers in West Gault and the best in Cambridge by far. We have also experienced a home-based childcare and private care center for reference. I understand the need for difficult fiscal decisions to be taken during this time. However, childcare needs to be viewed as an investment and not a cost. It is the essential service, and I would argue the most essential service outside of healthcare. It is an investment in not only these children and their families, but also our communities in which they live. The services that these children receive connects parents to various community agencies, which support them in whatever challenges they are facing. We personally have received tremendous support for our daughter from Kids Ability through the regional center that, that have not only allowed us to better parent and support her at home, but will also provide the basis for her needs when she enters the public school system. We have not seen these supports in place at other childcare spaces we have used. Simply put, if you divest yourself of these daycare centers, you are lowering the standard of childcare significantly in these communities. As I will address with statements from the KPMG report, if you close these centers, you will not, you will not be able to invest sufficient amounts of funds in order to improve the quality of community childcare programs in three essential areas, their facilities, staff, and programming, to meet what we are currently receiving from regional daycares. All staff at regionally-operated daycare channels, uh, centers are certified ECEs, who are compensated fairly for their work. Your report states that there is a direct relationship between employee compensation and the quality of care on page twelve. In other operating centers, only one staff member in the room needs to be a qualified ECE. This leads to babysitting style of care rather than an educational one. The lack of trained staff also creates an environment that leads to staff turnover, which can lead Thank you. Children need consistency, and the region, regional operated childcare center provides that. Once a child starts at the regional center, they almost always move through the program with their teacher and other classmates. This continuity of care allows for deeper relationship building between children and staff, as well as parents and staff. In turn, produces a level of trust and familiarity, which also reduces stress on children as they progress through the childcare programs. Other centers do not provide that model. Rather, once a child turns a certain age or size, they are relooking new room with new children and teachers. By closing these centers, you are essentially lowering the bar for the quality of childcare received across the region. Without competition from our regional centers, privately-run centers have less pressure to develop their programs and compete. As indicated in the KPMG report, by closing one or more centers, this will reduce accessibility and inclusion in the region since it provides more care to vulnerable populations compared with other operators. There is a risk that some children requiring special needs support at the five centers may not find alternative spaces in the community on page eighty-eight. In addition, the centers offer facilities and programming curriculum that cannot be matched to our community service providers. The report even states that the high-scoped curriculum is too expensive to run for most community providers, and the facilities offered are high-end extreme, um, offered are high-end and extremely difficult to reproduce by community centers. That's on page thirty-one, Programs and Services. Is in closing, thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and please vote no to the closing of these centers and vote yes to spending your budget on prevention and future community issues by maintaining the quality of childcare in our community and investing in the children of our region. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, the next, uh, delegation is Jessica Vorstaveldt from Cambridge. Jessica, welcome. You have three minutes and you have the floor.
Thank you. I am a mother of two daughters. I'd like to discuss how the closure of these centers puts women's rights at risk in the face of COVID nineteen. So a research document published by the McKinsey Global Institute states that as COVID nineteen continues to affect lives and livelihoods around the world, we can already see that the pandemic and its economic fallout are having a regressive effect on gender equality. And what is good for gender equality is good for the economy and society. Closing the five centers will lead to the loss of sixty-two full-time and twenty-eight casual jobs primarily held by women. When the lockdown began in March, these women were considered heroes, frontline, essential. I know that the staff at Christopher, for me personally, reached out as I managed my postpartum depression during the lockdown. I was managing a three-year-old and a four-month-old daughter. And they just did that in addition to offering emergency childcare for the region. This recommendation would have you think these heroes by leaving them jobless in the midst of the pandemic. This, very everyone. The McKinsey report also clearly states that policymakers and business leaders need to sufficiently invest in childcare and education now as the pandemic continues. The McKinsey research shows that maintaining status quo or even delaying these investments would be detrimental, detrimental to the economic prosperity of the community. Conversely, the report projects that investing now can lead to twenty to thirty percent increased public, private, or household annual spending by twenty twenty-five. We would totally miss this opportunity by cutting funding now. We would totally miss this opportunity by cutting funding now and restructuring our region's childcare system. The recommendation, recommendation suggests that closing these centers could be used-
You have one minute, Jessica.
-in other ways, though there is still no concrete plan to achieve this. At this point, supporting this recommendation feels reckless and economically unsound. So I urge you to reflect on a few questions. Can you confidently say that the current quality of the childcare system in our region will be maintained if you close these centers? Can you ethically live with contributing to the loss of secure employment for ninety women in the region, knowing that gender parity is crucial for economic recovery in a post-COVID world? Can you confidently say there is a plan to ensure that women will be supported to rejoin the workforce and further contribute to our economic recovery? Could you justify this decision to your wives, your mothers, your sisters, your daughters? Because that's what I'll have to explain to my two daughters. And it frustrates me and exasperates me that this fight for my rights, this fight for their rights still needs to be justified. I know you have difficult decisions ahead. Please don't let women, children, and our economy suffer as a result of a short-sighted decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Uh, our last delegate is Jordan Cochran, Region of Waterloo Paramedic. Jordan, welcome.
Hi there.
You have three minutes, Jordan, and you have the floor. Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, so I'll keep this short as uh many of the points in my original written statement have been covered already. Uh, I work as a paramedic in the region. My wife is an educator at one of the centers that is at risk of being closed. So uh, this is an issue that is obviously of great importance to me. Uh, because of my situation, I feel like I can lend some unique light to this conversation that hasn't been uh illuminated already. As stated previously, uh, the implication that these centers are abilities because of inefficiencies somehow, uh, in my personal opinion, is incorrect. Uh, these centers do cost a significant amount of money and that is for good reason. And I'll tell you why. The region, to their credit, is the best career opportunity for educators in this region. For sake of full transparency, it's important that council know the region pays their educators around thirty-two dollars an hour. Uh, these employees are college-educated, highly motivated, and we trust them to look after our children in a pandemic. Uh, comparable organizations in the region such as Jacob Hessler or St. Jacob's Childcare pay their employees anywhere from fourteen to eighteen dollars an hour while charging their, the parents of these children more for childcare. So the idea that we're going to save money by closing these centers and sending children and staff elsewhere is, in my opinion, equivalent to saying that we are saving money by closing centers that pay educators a living wage and outsourcing to other organizations that pay them barely above minimum wage. Uh, does this save money? Obviously, the answer is yes. Uh, is this an ethical thing to do? Obviously, the answer is no.
Jordan, you have one minute left.
Of course. I urge you to look at the details, counselors, in this proposal closely because the information in the regional websites and sent out by the email uh, that was before this debate, uh, does not paint the full picture and does not tell the full story. Uh, there are places in a budget to increase efficiency and to cut costs, but this is not one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, colleagues. Um, that is all the delegations that um were registered to speak. Um, I would draw your attention. Um, I think some of the delegations are going to uh submit um written proposals or um interventions, which is great. Um, there is correspondence from John Hedge dated um November fifteenth and you should have received that. So is there any other business? So for the sake of um the community who are watching this live stream, or who are still in um the meeting with us, uh, the subsequent council meeting um held on December second at six P M will deal with this issue. So I see, I see no questions. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn move by Council Armstrong and seconded by Council Urb. All those in favor, please use your icons to vote. That motion is carried. Thank you, colleagues, for your attention. It's been a very interesting evening and um take the rest of the night off.
Thanks, Chair Redman.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.